I call the meeting back in a session. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with dignity and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
All changes were published yesterday. No new changes for today.
Thank you. Ms. Shank, is there anything from the county attorney's office?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
First item of business is approval of October 16th, 2025 minutes. Any discussion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Bowers, second from Mr. Hesinger. Please show a sign of hands on approval. Passes. Motion passes. Let's move to citizen comments. This is for consideration of future agenda items that are not in today's agenda. Each person will be limited to three minutes. Please step forward.
There we go. All right. For the record, Glenn Giblina. So the planning board, I think, has now, we have an obligation to the citizens to make the best decisions that we can while we're up there. And I think we're leaving some stuff out, like inclusionary zoning. Currently, it's done in 31 states. It's done here in Florida. I think we need to move in that direction. The problem is that we have not. So when we have these developments that come by for community and they're not in community, then that's a problem. The other thing I want to bring out is I think we need to, when you make a decision on something, you should have a speaker here that comes as a board of county commissioners and says, "Look, we denied this or approved this because this, this, and this." So often I go to board of county commission meetings and I say, "You know what? They denied it or they approved it." And that's all we hear. We hardly hear from staff. I think you have an obligation. If you want to show your value to the, to the board of county commissioners, you need to step forward. When we have these communities and they don't include workforce housing, when EMS can't live there, when our educators in the red cannot live anywhere in Florida affordably, firefighter, paramedic, paramedics, only a few counties, but guess what? Manatee is one of them. That has to change. When these developers come to you, there's a few questions you should say, "Look, is there any workforce housing? What's the market rate? What are you going to sell it for? What's the interest rate? What is the mortgage payment going to be for that home buyer?" And if it doesn't fall within these, these workforce parameters, you failed at your job. You failed the community. So what they want to do is, "Hey, we want all the community services. We want EMS, fire, sheriff, all these teachers. We want schools built." But you can't live in our community. We have failed, we have failed truly the work, the workhorse of this community by not, by not pushing for more workforce housing in every development. It's not that hard. They should say, "Okay, we're going to do 10%." You've got a project coming up today. That'd be a couple hundred homes. That would make a difference in people's lives. I think we're missing the boat. I think you need to take a step back and use all the tools that we have in the toolbox and we're not doing it. You need to show up on the board of county commission meetings. Thank you.
Anyone else? At this time, I'll close citizen comments. If you plan on speaking today on any item, please stand and be sworn in. This is on any item today. If you plan on speaking, please stand up. Thank you. Could we have item number one read in?
Yes. This is PDR 24-29P Willow Bend Phase 5 C W E S XV LLC. This is quasi judicial. Your case planner, if you need a presentation today, is CJ Mills. This is a preliminary site plan to add a new phase five comprised of 16 single-family dwelling units on four acres to an existing subdivision comprised of 278 single-family dwelling units for a total of 294 single-family dwelling units on a total of 107.99 acres currently zoned PDR Plan Development Residential and generally located half a mile north of the intersection of US 301 and 16th Avenue East. Phase five is located on 63rd Court East with no address assigned in parish, Manatee County. Thank you.
Thank you. Has there been any expedite communication in this? This presentation is a presentation upon request. Is there any, anybody want to, any more than just a presentation? Yes. Can we have the applicant up here for a short presentation?
Good morning. My name is Cynthia Spidey. I'm with Barbis Kramer at 2002 West Cleveland Street in Tampa and I have been sworn. We have a brief presentation. Would you like me to present it or, yeah. So we submitted it a couple days ago. Okay, so how do I, oh, thank you. Thanks. So we are here. It's PDR 2429 Willow Bend Phase 5. It's located about a half a mile north of US Highway 301, 16th Avenue East. This shows you the sort of existing preliminary plan that was already approved many years ago. It's still under construction and the phase five is a remaining four acres up there tucked in the corner. The overall site is about 108, 109 acres. I like this slide. This is from your staff report. This kind of just shows the surrounding development and the different subdivisions around it. Future land use and zoning. It is urban fringe three and the zoning is PDR. So the code is basically at, if you're PDR, it just defaults to the density that's approved in the underlying future land use classification, which in this case is urban fringe. Just wanted to give a little big picture perspective on the history of this. It was, the county approved a site plan specific to the overall, you know, the built out area that I just showed you in the previous slide. That was back in 2008. At that time, the gross density was 2.4 and the net density was about 2.7. But that preliminary site plan has expired and that's the reason why we're here before you for the additional site plan for that corner portion. This is what it's going to look like. It's 16 units. It's overall, it's 2.72 dwelling units per gross acre. Net wise, it's three and a half. The range, and this is important to highlight, the range for urban fringe is three to nine based on that gross net. So I just wanted to demonstrate that we're well within the range of the comprehensive plan. So we are consistent with the maximum allowed within the urban fringe three future land use classification. The site plan before you at least meets all minimum and in some instances exceeds code requirements for land development code. We have a recommendation of a consistent from staff and happy to answer any questions. Our team is here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Is there any questions for the applicant?
A quick clarification, please. So it was rezoned in 2008, correct?
Correct, yeah.
For the 278. Then you had a phase five, phase six. Phase six is no longer there. Correct?
Yeah. Yeah, we don't have a phase six.
Okay. And originally in phase five, which is what this is, it was for six homes. In phase six, we're going to be two. So it was a total of eight. Now we're asking for 16. Is that correct?
Correct. I don't know, I don't know what was planned before. I'd have to ask. I don't, I don't, I don't, because the preliminary site plan that was approved in 2008 didn't show anything there to my knowledge. I tried to find it, but basically the preliminary site plan that you, that was built is there. So I don't know what was shown in that four acres at that time.
Maybe staff can answer that question for me. Because just reading through the staff report, that's the information.
Because 278 was approved and 278 was built or is under construction. So to me, that means that that four acres may or may not have had. So without the benefit of seeing that 2008 plan, which I dug through the files, I couldn't find it. I couldn't say for sure. But we, I can say with certainty, we are asking for 16 now on that and it's well within the ranges of the, of the comprehensive plan and the land development code. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's open this up for public comment. Please step forward. State your name and county you reside in.
Hello, I'm Gina Barker and I live at 6204 116th Ave East in the neighborhood we're talking about. Our home is in the back of the lake, so we will see all the homes being built. When we purchased our home, we were shown a map of a cul-de-sac potential with five homes and big lots and it'll be really nice. And now we see 16 homes. We've lived there two and a half years and whenever there's been bad storms or the hurricane Milton come through, our lake filled up real fast. Our road in front of our house drainage filled up real fast. All the lakes filled up real fast. So I'm concerned with 16 homes, a road, no extra ponds being built. The other lake that's, it's not really a lake that's going to be on the other side is being filled in with vegetation now. So that doesn't really, it's not really a pond anymore because there's no clearing out of that. So it's, you know, it's going to end up being land soon. So the house that's not in our neighborhood, that's across from that land flooded during Milton. And I know they contacted people and tried to get some help, but it just seemed like all the water went to them from our neighborhood. So that was a big problem for them. So we're concerned. We did talk to somebody in our backyard one time that they said, "Oh, they'll probably extend this lake over to, you know, give some room for water." But now we're told that's not happening. So we're just very concerned about what's going to happen. And also, all the construction that's going to take place. They did fix our roads. So who will be accountable for fixing the roads once they get ripped up again with all the construction? So those are our concerns that we just wanted to voice. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else for public comment?
For the record, Glenn Giblina, I've been sworn Manatee County and I'm going to be up here a lot today. So here we go again. They originally zoned for five houses and they got the density bonus. Normally with a density bonus, you have to put in workforce housing. This would be a perfect opportunity for that developer to step forward and say, "You know what? We're going to have the paramedics and the fire and the sheriff and school teachers living out here. Why don't we make these 16 units affordable and get the tax credits and the impact fees waived and, and support our community?" Again, you've got another subdivision, market rate, all the developer cares about, what's the bottom line going to the bank? This is a bad proposal. If anything, they should go back to the drawing board and leave it at the five. There's already flooding issues and there will be, continue to be flooding issues until we solve that problem. 16, you've heard from the community? You should listen to the community. The developer has not come forward and say, "You know what? We're going to, we're going to help the community with some affordable housing." Said no one ever.
Anyone else from the public? At this time, let's close public comment. Staff, please. Could you discuss what it was previously submitted as and flood issues, I guess?
CJ Mills with staff and I've been sworn. I won't speak on the flood issues myself, but-
but I will say that the, the FSP was approved, and there was additional land that was included with it, and there was eight houses on it. And now, they're coming back for 16, and I think there's been a reduction in the land that was included in the original. And then also, I do want to just speak on the density bonus. There is no density bonus given because it's within the, the range, the density allowed in UF3.
Can you clarify what the existing dwelling units per acre are compared to what is requested today?
The... I think overall, the... It was around 2.5 for the whole site. That's including like all of Willow Bend. If you're just looking at the dwelling units per acre on the site, then it's at 2.72.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions for staff? Thank you. Can we have the applicant back up here for some questions?
Good morning. My name is Jake Kramer. I'm a land use attorney at Barbas Kramer, 2002 West Cleveland in Tampa. I just wanted to address the, the concern about who's responsible and just assure you, this is the original developer, and we've also got the original home builder onboard as well. They're going to be producing the, the homes. The HOA actually had that concern as well. We've had a number of meetings and coordination with them, and, and we have an arrangement in place so that if there is any damage to things like roadways or sidewalks, that's going to be at the developer's cost to make sure it's in pristine condition when they're done. So, and with that, I'll turn it back over to Cynthia for any other questions.
Thank you. It looks like the lots are going to be a lot smaller than the existing?
There's, they are all code compliant.
I'm not arguing about that one way or the other. Now, would this be in the same homeowners association as the other, other houses?
Well, that's a good question. Yes. Yes.
Flooding issues?
That's a permitting issue. That's not really a, a planning issue. So, basically, what happens is when you go to, once you get the zoning and you go to permit your, your site plans, it goes through the, the modeling process and the SWIFTMUD permitting process. So, if any modifications need to be made to any of the stormwater ponds at that time, then that gets addressed through the ERP.
Would y'all haven't taken anything into account on?
Well, you have to...
Flood issues?
Sorry?
Because you, you haven't taken anything in account on the current issues?
The current issues, I thought Jake addressed that. That basically, that working with the homeowners association, they're going to make sure that any issues are addressed through that. It's, some portions are still in construction, so it's the same developer and the same home builder that are working together for the final phase. So, they're working with the homeowners association to make sure that any issues that occur throughout the process occur. But construction is a phasing thing, so and it is, can be uncomfortable in the in-between phase. We understand that.
I think the question is to address the stormwater and flooding issues, not the, what the community has already been facing and how that would impact with this new construction. Oftentimes, we'll typically see at some point some kind of stormwater planning or be able to hear from stormwater engineers on this and what's, what is happening, what the plan is to mitigate anything for the future. I think that's where the, the question and the concerns are coming from, Mr. Chair, not the question of if the existing roads are torn up, is the developer going to fix those?
So, stormwater and flooding is regulated by the Southwest Florida Management District. So, basically, once you get your zoning and this site plan goes to the next phase, there's an environmental resource permit process through SWIFTMUD that addresses that. So, there's a model, and the engineers have to work with yours, with the county staff as well as the SWIFTMUD staff, and they navigate that modeling at that time. That is not something that we do, you know, at the preliminary stage. It's just, it's a process. It's a development review process, and at every stage, there's another step that you take to get towards the end. And the permitting process is, addresses the stormwater and the flooding, and that's regulated through SWIFTMUD.
Previously, when everything was permitted, was this property part of the calculations for stormwater?
I would have to ask the engineer. I'm not sure if he's here.
You have to step forward.
Thank you. This is the civil engineer.
I'm Kai Balu. I'm with LJA Engineering.
You have been sworn?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Have you been sworn?
I have not.
I'm going to be also being sworn in. Do you swear in for the factual statement and representation to the planning commissioner or whatever?
Yes. So, with the question about the, the stormwater, the proposed development includes less impervious area than the previously approved plans, even though it does have more lots. And so, that's what's going to be submitted to SWIFTMUD possibly today. And so, as of right now, the stormwater ponds don't need any additional volume, and so that's what we're permitting.
The one resident said that some of the ponds are being filled in with, I guess, vegetation more or less. Is there any plans on upkeep?
So, right now, we're dealing with some, I guess, settlement issues on a couple of the ponds, which we have a contractor that's going in. They're going to cut out the areas and compact and backfill and re-sod or riprap those areas. It's more of erosion issues. So, that's being dealt with. We've got swells that we've reconstructed and re-sodded recently to deal with any issues that, that the homeowners are having. So, that's kind of where we're at right now.
Now, would the new houses be higher than the existing elevation-wise?
I don't know the answer to that. They're outside of the floodway, or flood lane. So... I would have to check that.
Thank you. Is there any additional questions for the applicant?
Yeah, this regarding the, the public comment regarding plans submitted upon purchase of these other homes, can you speak to documents provided to these homeowners on the existing homes as to what to expect to be built in this area? My understanding from the speaker was that they provided some sort of documentation of plans that were showing the eight homes, not 16, and purchasing the property on that basis. Could you speak to what was provided to the homeowners?
I can't speak to that. That was kind of before I got involved with the project, but...
Did you, before we let our engineer go, did you have any more engineering questions?
No more engineering.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know what marketing products were, were issued in 2008. I apologize. I don't know. And I don't, we have a MVR representative here, and I don't...
I'm not sure if that's relevant on the planning stage, planning commission one way or the other. Is it, Ms. Shane?
Barbara Zelmer, representing...
No, but since it was bought up, you can ask about it. This isn't bought up.
Thank you.
Barbara Zelmer, representing MVR Ryan Homes, home builder. With regards to that section over there, we were not under contract. It was not part of our, you know, what we purchased. I do know that there were some larger lots that were originally contemplated but not... We didn't market that those were going to be the lots because we had nothing to do with that. We just marketed Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3, and Phase 4, and that's it. And the homes that are going to be built, or if provided we get, the developer gets approval, because we are under contract to purchase those lots, they will be of the same quality, the same size. The lots will be the same size, so they will be consistent with the rest of the community.
So, the lots in this Phase 5 are the same size as the other phases?
Yes.
It doesn't show it on the...
Not, not the large lots that you were speaking of previously, but what is being presented to the planning commission and eventually the BOCC if approved here.
So, there are sections that will be the same size lots as?
Yes.
Throughout the subdivision, not necessarily?
Just consistency, right.
Any additional questions for the applicant? Staff closing comments? Seeing applicant closing comments? We do have one more question?
I just have a quick question for staff, if you don't mind. Considering the flooding issues that we've had and behind the stormwater management and things of that nature, unless I'm missing something, the vast majority of the applicants who have come before us have done extensive research and planning for stormwater to present to us, thus to present to the board. Am I correct with that? I'm not missing anything there, am I?
And CJ Mills with staff, and I've been sworn. The, there are applicants previously that have come with stormwater calculations and drainage calculations and things of that nature, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
Sorry, CJ. Just a couple of questions. Reading in the staff report, it was saying on the property, some, some tree removals already occurred. Do we know what trees were removed, and were they a permitted removal?
I think for that, I'd have to have...
Okay. And then I have a transportation question as well.
Yeah. I'll have Kara Kinnick come up for environmental, and then transportation questions, I'll defer to Prony.
Thank you.
Good morning. Kara Kinnick for staff. I have been sworn. So, it did appear to be some native trees. My staff mentioned the staff report. We would account for that at time of final site plan with the tree removal replacement matrix. So, even if the trees were currently removed, we would have them account for it with a tree survey at time of final site plan and looking at aerials. So, they'll have to be replaced.
Were they, was it a permitted removal?
Not to our knowledge, but we'll have them account for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Good morning, Prony Bonifis for staff. I've been sworn.
Good morning. It was showing that the, the future LOS with the project is an FD. The general analysis shows that the road to have a deficit. I mean, putting it to an F, but they did a, it was a more detailed one shows it keeps it at a D. Did we do the more detailed analysis, or did the applicant do the?
The applicant, that's been one of the steps. When the projected lake is failing, that's been the only step the applicant can do, either parallel analysis or submit advanced study for the, to show that the lake may have capacity. What was done by the applicant and what we reviewed and we agree with the analysis that the lake may have more capacity based on the, on the analysis provided by the applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I guess the applicant's traffic guy wants to come up here too, so...
Good morning. Michael Yates with Palm Traffic, and I have been sworn. Did you have any questions? We did the arterial analysis. So, just a little bit on that. So, when you do the capacity of the roadway, they're based on generalized capacities. So, FDOT publishes a generalized capacity table, and they make assumptions for the amount of green time that's being given to movements, and so all the general factors that are used throughout the state. And so, what we do and we have particularly need to look at a link, we actually go out and do counts. We count the intersections, both on 301, North and South, and then go through and do a detailed arterial analysis using a program called Syncro, which does a full evaluation of the operation of the link. So, that's what we went through, and that's what we did on this project.
And that kept the level at, at D?
Correct.
And is that with the future growth that's going on?
It is. Yes.
Any, because there's concerns about safety around that area. We had a teenager killed on a motorcycle in that area. Any plans to do anything?
I mean, again, it's 16 homes out of what has already been built, so the impacts would be very minimal. There is a condition that we'll probably need to come back through and when we're coming through final site plan, do a detailed evaluation at the intersection of 301. But for the purposes of the zoning, the impacts were just more a general evaluation of the links and not really a full safety evaluation.
Hello, Cynthia Spideyell again. I just wanted to make sure to be clear, because I believe one of the questions had to do with stormwater modeling. So, the reason why we really haven't prepared any kind of really big presentations on that is because we're not really, we're not, as the engineer testified, we're not increasing any impervious areas. So, beyond what was previously approved and submitted and approved for the, for the site. So, but if there is something specific that you would like our engineer to address and how he got to that calculation, we would certainly be open to your, your suggestions as to how to better describe that to you, if we could do that today, or if you needed us to come back to do that or present it to the board.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but they're going, you're going to be raising the level of the surface on 16 homes versus eight homes, correct? So, that's going to logically in my mind disperse the water in a different way, and based off of current testimony of the resident, there is, just want to make sure we're being responsible and making something that is semi-bad, not make it bad in terms of the ponds overflowing, et cetera, et cetera.
I believe she said that the ponds fill up when it rains. I don't think she said it flooded. Did she say?
I don't disagree with you. That's what I'm saying, semi-bad with, with it. So, if they're already filled up now, and then you add this location of raised services, surfaces, thereby dispersing the water further away from that piece of property where before it wasn't, is that, that's the concern? Or is it making it?
Worse.
Worse.
So, so we haven't, we haven't modeled that, but we spoke with SWIFTMUD and basically by not including any additional impervious area. So, you know, your runoff is based on your impervious area. So, if you have less area for the, for the stormwater to run off, then you're not increasing the runoff theoretically. That's the idea. So, that's kind of how our calculations are based, and looking at the volumes based on that within the ponds, we didn't feel that it needed any alterations because we had looked at possibly cutting out additional volume for the pond, but based on these calculations, we decided not to do that.
Okay, still logically in my head, right now, you have effectively this flat piece of land, right? But you're not going to affect the, basically where the water can go unless you raise up the land for each home. So, now the water's running off somewhere, but there's less land for it to absorb. Does that make sense?
Right, but there's less impervious that, than what was previously permitted for because we have less land now than what was permitted previously. Previously, there was another chunk of land to the, to the east that was going to be part of this project. That's already been approved, and now that portion's being taken out. So, we had less, less lots previously. They were larger lots, so you'd, you may have had larger homes, but now we're having smaller units, but we have more of them. But it's still less impervious area than what was previously permitted. Does that make sense?
Just start next step. Thank you.
Do you know if the streets hold water when it rains or during a big rainstorm?
If they're ponding, is that what you're asking?
The streets, yes, sir.
I don't know that. I mean, I can go out there and, and check that during the next rain event, but I, I haven't seen any of that when I was out there. Like I said, we, we dealt with swell issues in the rear lots recently and had those reconstructed for drainage. All that drains to the, the internal ponds. But, I mean, that's definitely something I can check on, so...
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other additional questions? Any? We can't open up public comment anymore. Any closing comments from the applicant?
No, thank you. We just would like to get through the, we would appreciate your support to get to the next phase, we can actually go through the permitting process. So without your support, we won't be able to get to the permitting phase to actually model these issues out and, and get to Swift MUD and we've been waiting for, you know, this step in the process so that we can continue with that modeling process and get that going. So we would respectfully request that you support the project so we can take it to the next level and thank you very much.
Thank you. Any deliberations or may I entertain a motion?
I'll guess I'll just start. In preparation, I, I don't see adding this additional homes as a huge deal. When I first looked at the project, learning more about it, but based off our recent experience with our applicants coming in with a much better design and information as it relates to stormwater, I just don't want it to be an issue. So I can't support it as it is today, but I think that'll be more of a message to be prepared when you go before the board to talk about the stormwater issues. And I think that's my job today to do that. So I can't support it as it is right now without further information that really makes sense and making sure that the project is not going to create a worsening condition for the rest of the nearby neighborhoods. So that's where I'm at with that.
Any additional comments?
I got one.
I would suggest or make a motion for a continuance for them to come back to present us with more additional information as making reference to my fellow commissioner. That would be my proposal rather than a straight-up deny. I think there's too many questions. We need some more additional information and like my fellow commissioner said, you know, previous applicants have provided us with stormwater information. I think that would be, that would be my two cents in, in rather straight-up denying it would be to make a motion for a continuance, to come back in front of us to provide us with additional information that we have all asked for or made reference to.
Sure, I just spoke with the, with the applicant and she would be okay with that continuance.
May I have a motion then?
I'd like to make a motion that we continue this process with them and come back to provide us with additional information.
I just want to clarify, Mr. Chair, staff indicates the next meeting's December 11th, so you could put that date in the motion, continue December 11th, PC meeting?
Revise my motion to continuance to December 11th meeting. Is that good?
So we have a motion, do we have a second? So a motion by Mr. Esslinger and a second by Ms. Gay. Can we show a hands of?
Before you do that. Ms. Prosser, did you have comment that you wanted to make?
I did, so I'm, more like Commissioner Bowers stated, a project as it stands, I'm, I don't like the increased density. It was, you did have a Phase 6 that was removed, that's a piece of property you're, you're talking about, so there were six in Phase 5. I don't even mind eight in Phase 5, but 16 doubling it, I have a problem with that. The other thing, I, I know that you did not need to have a neighborhood workshop because it's an infill, but out of respect for the homeowners that are actually in that neighborhood, there should have been a neighborhood workshop to hear their concerns and to say, well, we don't have to do it because it's an infill, to me is disrespectful to the homeowners that spent money in that neighborhood. So for me, as it stands, I would do a denial.
Well, we have a motion and a second right now. Are we still, you're still good with your motion? You're still good with your second? May I show, show a hands for approval of his motion? Motion passes three to two. So please read item number two in the record.
Item number two, ZL-25-01 Brightwork Real Estate Commercial Rezone, Aleppo Edward Owner. Your presenter today, if you need one, is Alyssa Grove. This is a rezone of two parcels totaling approximately .86 acres, generally located at the southeast corner of Manatee Avenue, State Road 64, and 38th Street West, commonly known as 3737 Manatee Avenue West, Bradenton, Manatee County, from GC General Commercial and RSF 6, Residential Single Family 6, to GCL General Commercial Limited Zoning District and approving a schedule of permitted and prohibited uses as voluntarily proffered by the applicant.
Thank you. This is, has there been any ex parte communication in the reference to this? This is a presentation upon request. Can we have a brief presentation by the applicant?
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Scott Rudisell. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Brightwork Real Estate. I do have a brief presentation if we could pull it up. Ah, there it is, great, thank you. All right, so this is a site in West Bradenton. It's a little bit less than an acre. The reason we're coming before you is because the site is currently split in terms of its zoning. The front portion of the site has general commercial zoning, it's got existing commercial uses on it. The rear portion of the site is vacant, but in terms of redevelopment, the front portion of the site is really not big enough to have any meaningful kind of redevelopment for commercial uses and so that's why we're coming before you. This is a site that is in your urban core, it is in your urban service area, it sits on an urban corridor, which is areas that are encouraged for redevelopment. So broad overview of the location of the site on the south side of Manatee Avenue West. Go a little closer. If you're familiar with Shake Pit on Manatee Avenue, that, this site is directly across 38th Street from Shake Pit and CVS. It's got commercial uses all around it. It's got a self-storage facility across Manatee Avenue and the new Florida cancer specialist offices to the east of that. This is the future land use. Again, we have a split, front of the site's ROR, the rear of the site is RES 9, and this is the zoning. So you can see the front, front of the site's general commercial, rear is RSF 6, but if you kind of look up and down Manatee Avenue, the depth of the commercial zoning that we're asking for is consistent with, with what's in the area and what's on the other side of Manatee Avenue. We did ask for General Commercial Limited here, so we are providing a list of uses that would be excluded and so these are some of the uses that have been excluded from what would generally be allowed under general commercial zoning normally. And then we've also proposed stipulation for enhanced buffering. So with the limited zoning, we have the ability to include stipulations and so we've provided a stipulation here that provides for landscaping and fencing with additional opacity in any areas where the project's adjacent to residential zoning or uses, single family. Happy to answer any questions that the commission has, but we're respectfully requesting recommendation of approval.
Yes, Scott, just real quick, there's, there's ordinance established in terms of, for instance, lighting, not knowing, I don't know if you're allowed to say what might be going in here, but I had really two concerns. One is potential lighting on the residential side.
Right.
There's ordinance in place for the protection of that, for those residences or not?
Yeah, the county has strict lighting standards, but in addition, we're going to have a fence and, and landscape in there that will also assist with that.
Okay. Then my only other concern, when I was looking at the allowed uses, like for instance, I was seeing like, like a kennel could go in here. So then my concern, no offense, having had an office next to, I'm an animal lover as most everybody knows, but that said, I would have to envision like a kennel would be, this would be a terrible spot for the residences if it was a kennel with outdoor space of, unfortunately, barking dogs. This still is my only real concern.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, it's straight rezoned, so we don't have a designated use. I can tell you that that has not been anything that I have heard from the client in terms of potential users. So I, you know, I don't, I don't know that this would be a great site. It's not that big, for one thing, so.
Sure, okay.
I know yours was in a small site too, but.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any additional questions for the applicant? Thank you. At this time, let's open up for public comment. Anybody wishes to speak on this issue? Closing public comment, anything from staff? Applicant closing comments, any? May I entertain a motion? We have a motion from Ms. Prosser, a second from Mr. Esslinger for approval. Please raise hands for showing votes. Motion passes five to zero. Please read item number three in the record.
Item number three is ZL-25-02, State Road 64 Murphy Commercial Rezone. Desi B. Murphy is the owner. Your presenter today is Alicia Henry, if you need one. This is a rezone of approximately 7.11 acres, generally located 800 feet east of State Road 64 East and Lorraine Road intersection and commonly known as 15,005, State Road 64 East, Bradenton and Manatee County, from A. General Agriculture to GCL General Commercial Limited Zoning District, approving a schedule of permitted and prohibited uses as voluntarily proffered by the applicant.
Thank you. Has there been any ex parte communication in this? This is still a presentation upon request. Can we have a brief presentation from the applicant?
Good morning. For the record, Tom Skarsky, Certified Planner with RVI Planning and Landscape Architecture. Give me one second here. So the, we do have the team here that is, as mentioned, the property owner is Ms. Desi Murphy. Our transportation consultant is Becca Bond with Kimley Horn and then our environmental consultant is Carrie McNutt with Monarch Ecology. The site, the 7.1 acre site is located in, in the activity node on State Road 64 and Lorraine Road. And it has frontage directly on State Road 64 with a future land use of urban fringe 3. It's existing agricultural, general ag zoning and contains one manufactured home. You can see it at the northwest of the site there. That's where the applicant, Desi Murphy, lives. She is the property owner as well as the applicant for this. As you can see, when we go into zoning, this is a site that's currently sandwiched between two commercial sites. It is still agriculturally zoned, but she understands that it's not really suitable for agriculture anymore, which is why she's proposing the, the rezone to allow for the highest and best use. Our request summary is to rezone from ag to general commercial limited. While we are looking to go to commercial, we're looking to stay compatible with the Mill Creek property to the north and limit any potential impacts by limiting our floor air, floor area ratio. The general commercial allows for a floor area ratio up to .5, which would be about 153,000 square feet of, of building on this site. We are proposing a limited floor area ratio at .35, which would be about 108,000 square feet. We're also proposing a proffered schedule of uses restricting more intense uses that could happen on this site to have more of a community commercial use. And we also do have an increased and enhanced setback stipulation for some of the more intense uses, as we discussed with staff. So as mentioned, the site, which is outlined in red, is currently zoned ag and it is located adjacent to commercially zoned properties and so the applicant is looking to set the property up for future use as she looks to move from the site. Just a picture here of kind of the surrounding existing conditions, the character of the communities, self-storage, multifamily. It is a transitioning area, as mentioned. This is located within an activity node, being close to the Lorraine Road and State Road 64 corridor there. Both are designated thoroughfares in the comp plan. So for compatibility, the, the main focus here was on the Mill Creek subdivision to the north. Mill Creek understood when developing that they were developing with an activity node and so they took precautions at the time to establish additional easements that are recorded easements to allow for this protections from future commercial that would be occurring on this State Road 64 thoroughfare. So future development would be subjective, subjected to the additional buffering and screening per code and there's a total of 70 feet of separation between the future commercial on this site and the Mill Creek subdivision to the north. The public facilities, State Road 64, as I mentioned, is designated as an arterial roadway. Utilities are under Manatee County and there is available capacity for, for the site to be developed. Fire is under East Manatee Fire Rescue and EMS is under Manatee County Emergency Medical Services. For consistency with the comprehensive plan, policy 2.2.1.11 is consistent with the intent of the urban fringe 3 future land use and we are proposing a floor area ratio limited under the allowed of .5, as I mentioned, we are .35 and accommodating neighborhood-serving commercials. So the point of this, the activity nodes are really to capture some of those neighborhood commercials for the surrounding residential, so that's what we're looking to achieve here. Policy 2.1.1.4 adds development in areas with public facilities. As I mentioned in our previous slide, there is capacity in this area and we meet the location criteria for the commercial, for the land use operative provisions. With that, we do ask for your recommendation, recommendation of approval on this one and we have designated that we have the available infrastructure and are consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development regulations and we do have our team here for any questions you guys may have.
Thank you. Is there any questions?
Couple of clarifications, if you will.
Sure.
The, the property to the west, is that also you?
That is not, no.
Okay.
It is just the property outlined here that's owned by the applicant, Ms. Murphy.
Because I thought, and maybe this could be a question for staff, I thought one of those pieces of property recently came before the board for approval of a rezone. Are you aware of that at all?
I'm not aware, no. This is just the, the property outline that's owned by Ms. Murphy here.
So from a road improvement or otherwise scenario, what other plans, because if I'm not mistaken, that's, that's nearing where it's currently where the four lane turns into a two lane heading east, is that correct?
I'm going to defer to our traffic engineer for the traffic comments you have.
Okay.
Good morning, Becca Bond, Transportation Engineer with Kimley Horn. I have been sworn. You are correct. This property is, like, edge of the property on the west side is almost right where that four lane ends, so you are, you're accurate there. As you probably all know, I know it's been a hot topic of conversation, there's a PD&E that's underway for the widening of State Road 64 east of Lorraine. That would obviously apply to this property and provide additional capacity. I will say that only 30% of the trips associated with this development would be east of the property. We're only anticipating 30% coming to and from along that two lane segment. The remainder, we're anticipating to be using the, the western segment that's already the four lanes.
So is there some sort of middle lane heading east to be able to turn into this now? I'm just concerned about safety in terms of people stop and go, et cetera, at a current, like, let me back up. Are you aware when it's anticipated that State Road 64 there is supposed to be widened? I know that's a.
I wish I knew.
Yeah, I think a lot of people do.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I know that the, the PD&E is underway, which is going to determine the ultimate, you know, cross-section and alignment of the roadway. Because it's a DOT roadway, it's something that the county's working on with DOT and I'll, I'll let county staff answer if they happen to know more than I would on the timeline of that process. When it comes to accessing the property, this is coming before you with. When it comes to accessing the property, this is coming before you without a GDP and without a site plan. So again, the access would be required to be coordinated with DOT also. As you mentioned, there, there are adjacent commercial properties. So there is potential for cross-access, you know, to help alleviate the concern with safety for the property. As of right now, they would likely only be allowed a ride and ride out along the frontage. So I'm sure it would be advantageous for the ultimate developer to utilize a cross-access that would increase the safety.
And forgive my ignorance, does that have to come back to the planning commission or the board for approval?
That's a really great question. I actually don't know. I would refer to, to our planner. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Again, for the record, Tom Skarsky. It depends on what the final use is here. So this is setting it up for the General Commercial Limited. We don't know that final use. Ms. Murphy is, is the property owner, but not a developer. She's trying to sell this property. But it would require the permitting, going through permitting, if there are special approvals on it that is a use that requires your guys' approval, then you would see it again at that stage.
And do you anticipate any build out before the widening?
It's difficult to say at this point. It's, as I mentioned, Ms. Murphy is just the property owner. So it really depends on the direction, as far as the sale of the property, how that would occur.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Any additional questions for applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Let's open this up for public comment. Anyone from the public would like to speak on this issue?
For the record, Glenn Giblin, I have been sworn. Why don't we just wait till the first shovel is in the ground to widen State Road 64? Why is that so hard to comprehend? You want to pass all this stuff without the infrastructure being there? And you're right about that. It is a safety issue. There is no middle turn there. So I read somewhere in there, they wanted to put in 63 homes. Lorraine and 64 currently and will continue to be a nightmare. Has anybody driven that road between three and six?
Every day.
Every day, and it takes time. Now, you want another 64 cars in front of you turning out on that property, going somewhere? This, this, these are the straws that break the camel's back. Projects like this with no vision and no infrastructure. This is a no-brainer. Until the road is there, the infrastructure and the safety of our community should come first. The citizens deserve it and we demand it. This going ahead, they're going to come out, okay, now they got a developer lined up. Oh, let's just go get 64 homes, the permitting process start. You've already let the horse out of the barn. You need to send a message and say, until the infrastructure is here, we're not going to, we're not going to do any more development. It's a safety issue. There's no middle lane. They bought it as ag. It could stay ag until all the proper infrastructure and safety is in place. Until that point, keep it ag. You don't have to approve it yesterday, today. You got to 2050. Future land use means exactly that. Future when it's safe. So please deny the rezone. There'll be time to develop this. It's just not this time. For the record, thank you.
Good morning. Mark Van Der Ee, Manatee County, I have been sworn. And I really didn't come prepared to speak on this particular project, but since it was talked about, I also agree with some of the statements from Mr. Gibilini that it's not ready yet. You know, I, I hope that you would deny this rezone request at this time because you're basically signing a blank check. You have no idea what's going in there. I wonder, the timing is not right, certainly. Anyone coming from the west would have to somehow maneuver a U-turn to get back up in there, whatever they wind up putting there. I don't know what's going to go there. I don't know how much it's going to impact drainage. That, that, that property is going to drain back into the Mill Creek Basin, which we already know that whole area between north of State Road 64 up to Waterline Road and between Ry Road and the state park is very, very touchy when it comes to the drainage situation. In fact, Tom Gerstenberger has a special Mill Creek Basin model that he has established just for that area because it is so prone to flooding. Congestion on traffic, you don't know, really. I mean, what's going to go in there? How can you decide if this rezone is suitable or not if you don't even know what's going to go there? Now, maybe the law says they don't have to tell you what's going to go there, but the law also says, right now it's ag and you don't have to rezone if you don't think the timing's right. If you don't think you have enough information to make a good decision without adversely impacting a lot of businesses and people living around that area. Yeah, eventually, you know, that's all going to become commercial. Hopefully Florida DOT gets their act together and fixes that road as far as they need to go. Put in turn lanes, all that sort of thing. The characterization that most of the traffic is going to be coming from the west, I think that's not a good characterization. There's been tens of thousands of new homes and houses approved east of this site. Those are all going to be coming from the east. That's all two lane. They're putting in, planning to put in a couple more roundabouts out there on Uline Road and Mournside and State Road 64. It's all going to be impacted by whatever you put here at this particular node site. I, I wonder if there is a offer by a developer for this landowner contingent on this rezoning being approved. I don't know if that's a fact or not, but, and I wouldn't deny this landowner, the, the full use of their property when it's appropriate. I don't think it's appropriate right now. And it may be just a few short years. Within five years, it, it may be more appropriate for this rezoning to occur. And hopefully you'll have a better idea of what the plan is. What are they going to put there? I don't think how you could approve a rezone without really knowing what's going to go in there because it really, really matters. You know, there's been a lot of discussion countywide in our, how our comp plans are deficient in that we, we use this usage-based so-called Euclidean rezoning, planning, instead of a form-based planning. And this is a, a good example of where it's really not appropriate for that old type of zoning approach that we've got in this county. So I would again ask you to please deny this at this point. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? At this time, let's close. Anything from staff who have worked with this project?
Alicia Henry from staff, I have been sworn. So I, we just had some members of the public come up and make some statements. And I would just like to give a little bit of clarification in regards to some of the statements that were made. So just wanted to mention that this is a limited straight rezone where there are no uses that's being proposed. I know that it is within the staff report where it is a potential for, if it is approved, to have 64 residential units there. But that is with the caveat of the land development regulations may restrict maximum, maximum development potential to address land use compatibility. Also, I'd also like, I would also like to mention that it's with the schedule of permitted and prohibited uses. We actually analyzed the site. We took into consideration the residential neighborhood that is to the north. So we were able to trim off some of the more intense uses for the site. With certain particular uses, we've even put in place that there will be a 20-foot setback to the residential development that is to the north. We've also taken off grocery store. Although retail is still in the schedule of uses, a grocery store will not be permitted on site because we do understand that there is only a two-lane road for State Road 64 at the time. So we have taken into consideration that State Road 64 is a two-lane road and, and the more intense uses are restricted because of the schedule of uses that was proffered by the applicant.
Thank you. Is there any questions for staff?
Can you tell me about that property to the west? That was recently approved for a rezone, wasn't it?
It was approved for a rezone. Right now, it's being developed by U-Haul by, so they are developing, developing it for, I believe, self-storage and, but I, I don't, I didn't really look into that particular use that was approved. The only thing I know is that it was approved for a rezone. And it's right now a general commercial and it is for self, self-storage.
But one of the differentiating factors is that it has an access from Lorraine Road versus 64, if I'm not mistaken?
I haven't analyzed that, that project.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions for the applicant? Not seen any applicant closing comments?
Yes, again, for the record, Tom Skarsky. To clarify what staff said again, we don't have an end use in mind when it comes to the permitted uses. Page five of the staff report does allow all the prohibited uses that we've, we've proffered restrictions on. Really trying to make sure this is set up to be as compatible as possible with the area. As I also mentioned, there is the commercial to the east and west on this property with the transitioning area. So we're just trying to make sure that it, it fits with the character of the neighborhood and supports the local residential.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion, deliberation, or may I entertain a motion?
I guess my concern is just the, the timing and the, the safety of this road, not knowing. I'd feel really good about it, I'd 100% on board if we knew that something wasn't going in there until the road was fixed, was, is widened. Because this is just a, a section that is, I think it's just, the, the timing is terrible and not knowing exactly when it's going to be widened. If we knew, if I knew that really this is going to be in conjunction with the widening of whatever was going in there, I'd be 100% on board all day long. I mean, it's, this area is growing, whatever's going in there is going to need to be for that community 100%. My hesitation is just from the safety of that road in and out from both directions, but mostly from heading east and having the crossover where lanes are merging or expanding, et cetera. That's, that's my biggest concern. So that's where I'm at on that.
Ms. Prosser?
I'm a bit conflicted myself. Maybe my fellow board members can help me through this. Safety-wise, yes, that whole, that whole area is a nightmare. But what I'm conflicted about is we don't know Mrs. Murphy. She may have a medical condition that requires her to sell her property. Her property is worth more money zoned commercial. It's an appropriate place. It's right smack in the middle.
Appropriate use.
It's an appropriate use. So we, we don't know. And to, to ask her, wait five years, 10 years? How do we know she has five years, 10 years? So I'm conflicted with safety and with the right of the homeowner to sell her property.
And it will still go through final site plan or preliminary site plan either way and meet all county regulations. And like they said, it's still, the entrance would have to be approved by DOT.
I was going to add that comment too, as far as what you just said. You know, we're just doing a simple rezone here. And if she ever was to sell that property to the developer and whatever their idea is being put on that property, they're going to have to come in front of us. And that's when we can impose some of these stipulations that we're talking about now. I don't think that we can prohibit Mrs. Murphy from using this property to her best interest. And again, to clarify, in, in my eyes, I might be missing something. This is just a simple rezone. There is no, there is no future projection of what's going to go on there, how it's going to go on there. And I think when, when they're, when, when, when the property is sold to a developer, they're going to have to go through the process. And that, that's when they're going to come in front of us and we can have those concerns, you know, based on what, when the road's widening and so on and so forth. So from my perspective, I, I would be in favor of approving this rezone.
I'm, I'm glad you brought that up because I totally missed that in my head. Ms. Schenk or staff, can you comment as to, assuming it gets approved, what's, what's the process then in terms of they want to, I don't know, put a gas station in or whatever? Does that, does that come back some way or go through? How does that work, especially for the public, in terms of ensuring that we're not putting, like my number one issue is safety, right? So what's in place to kind of dispose of that issue?
Okay, Rachel Layton for staff, I have been sworn. Okay, a couple of different pieces to try and answer your question. I believe that in the list of proposed and prohibited uses, gas stations is stricken. Is that correct, Alicia?
Okay.
So if they wanted to then add a gas station, they would have to come back to have that used added and they would have to have that transportation study amended to evaluate how many trips that would require. So in a lot of ways, we took those in transportation studies. They take into consideration the highest, most intense use for traffic generation when they do these studies. So the applicant would have had to have come in with the most intense use to do the traffic study for this project, which is how I believe they got to eliminating the grocery store from the list of uses.
Okay, so what about a scenario under the permitted use? What's the process then?
So under the permitted list of uses, then they would submit a preliminary and final site plan combination application for administrative review to Manti County for staff review. And that includes 15 different departments, division review or divisions within Development Services and Public Works to complete a very technical review in compliance with Land Development Code and Comprehensive Plan and Public Standards manuals. The county can then issue their final site plan permit. They cannot start construction until a Southwest Florida Water Management District Environmental Resource Protection Permit is issued. And for this particular project, FDOT permits are issued.
So if staff, whoever in staff had a safety issue, they're able to bring that up and address that?
That's correct. And during final site plan review, we would encourage to, to know the applicant, to give us updates on how they're proceeding with FDOT.
Thank you.
Any additional deliberation or discussion, or may I entertain a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
First by Mr. Ellinger.
Second.
Second by my Ms. Gay. Any discussion?
The only discussion I would like for staff is because I haven't seen some of the reports that go to the county commissioners. I'm going to support it today, but I want, I want it noted for the, the county commissioners to understand, make sure they look into and are okay with the safety issues surrounding the, the traffic and the location. So that's all.
Show of hands for approval or denial. Motion passes five to zero. Please read item number four.
Item number four is PDR 24-32, ZG Lone Valley GDP. Hecht, Manti Property LTD is the owner with Lennar Homes LLC is the contract purchaser. This is presentation scheduled, so your presenter today will be James McDevitt. This is a rezone of approximately 683.3 acres from A General Agriculture to PDR Plan Development Residential Zoning District, generally located on the north side of Buckeye Road between I-75 and Fort Hamar Road with no address assigned parish. Manti County approving a general development plan for one, up to 2,047 single-family dwelling units and two, up to 100.
units, and two, up to 150,000 square feet of public-use facilities for a potential fire station.
Applicant, please.
Hi. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Kayla Wetkowski with Clearview Land Design, and I have been sworn. Today, we have our project team with us to answer any questions that you might have about our proposal. The site that we are discussing today is 685 acres located on the north side of Buckeye, just south of the Hillsborough Mount and Manatee County line, and west of the F-Dam boundary in between I-75 and Fort Hamer. The future land use of the subject property is urban fringe three, and it was originally given this designation in 1989. As you can see, all of the surrounding properties also have urban fringe three future land use, as this area is intended for low-density residential development. Our request today is for a rezoning from general agriculture to residential plan development for up to 2,047 single-family homes and 15,000 square feet for a public-use facility. As a part of this request, the applicant is committing to dedicate land for a fire station, and we have been working with the Parish Fire District to provide a site in an area that would benefit both existing and future residents. And I believe the fire chief is in attendance today in support of our project. We will be preserving 99% of the wetlands on-site with minimal impacts for roadway crossings. And in addition to that, we are also exceeding the wetland buffer requirement by providing 30-foot wetland buffers. We are also exceeding the buffer requirements for roadways for Future Road JJ. We are providing a 25-foot roadway buffer, as opposed to the required 20-foot. And for Buckeye, we are also providing a minimum 25-foot, maximum 50-foot buffer, as opposed to the 20-foot requirement. In addition, the green belt buffer, we are going to provide a 20-foot buffer, which exceeds the minimum 15-foot that is required by code. The project team held a voluntary neighborhood meeting in the beginning of this year to engage the community early on in the planning process and get feedback. We sent notice to property owners within 500 feet of the boundary. We had one resident in attendance from the Prosperity Lakes Development south of Buckeye. The subject property is outlined in red, and as you can see, it's completely surrounded by other residential plan developments, and it is a remnant agricultural parcel at this point. We believe that our project is consistent with the existing land use pattern and beneficial to the existing communities. And with that, I will turn it over to our civil engineer, Chris Fisher, to discuss utilities and stormwater. Thank you.
Good morning. Chris Fisher with Clearview Land Design, and I have been sworn. So, I know the board is particular about stormwater, so I thought I'd get into a little detail about what we've done thus far with the project, to give you an idea of what the existing drainage patterns are like on the site thus far, today. So, for the most part, the property drains from east to west. Curiosity Creek is in the northwest corner of the project. And so, what we've done is we've tried to utilize some of those existing drainage patterns to make the water go through our site, to not have an adverse impact on the property to the east of us. Also, most of the project on the perimeter has existing ditches that moves the water naturally. We're saving all of those ditches along the perimeters of the property so that it drains as it does today. From a post-development perspective, we will providing onsite ponds that will treat and attenuate the onsite runoff, excuse me, the onsite runoff, although we're not required. We've actually gone through an extensive analysis for the whole site, and we are able to reduce the runoff rates by more than 50% from a pre-post condition. We are proposing minimal wetland impacts, again, to try to preserve that natural existing drainage flow. On-site, the floodplain impacts are limited mostly to all of the onsite wetlands, which we're not impacting, and therefore, we have a minimal impact on, from a floodplain perspective. Our client has actually gone through an extensive and very expensive design process with our firm, and prior to even coming to you guys today, we've actually already gone through several reviews with both Swift Mud and Manatee County. So, they've seen half of our drainage design for the site, basically everything south of Road JJ. The county and Swift Mud have reviewed. We're very close to getting those approvals in place. There's just a few comments left with the county, and Swift Mud, we're expecting any day now from an approvals process. Existing utilities. So, the site is outlined in blue. This is the master sewer plan that the county has worked on. There's existing force main that's adequately sized to serve this site already on Buckeye Road, as well as an existing 18-inch water main that has capacity as well to serve this site. So, with that, I will turn it over to the land use attorney.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, commissioners. Kyle Grimes, attorney with, from Grimes Galvano, and I have been sworn. Kayla and Chris did a great job of kind of explaining the project itself and the work that'll be done on-site. But I want to take the opportunity to talk a little bit about what Lennar has done in this area for off-site infrastructure and what they're planning to do with this project. As Chris mentioned, there are utilities along Buckeye. Those were all put in place by Lennar with their Prosperity Project to the south, and they've already been working on a lot of roadway infrastructure in this area. With that Prosperity Project, they have designed the future four-laning of Buckeye Road from US 301 to the curve on Buckeye Road, and they are in the process of building the first two lanes of that future four-lane divided roadway from 301 to Fort Hamer. And so, and they've also designed and are currently under construction for the last segment to connect Fort Hamer Road from North County there at Buckeye that goes all the way down to South County. This is the last segment of Fort Hamer Road, and they are under construction on that right now. And so, when we were working through this project and going through the planning exercises and meeting with staff, we wanted to see how this project can be used to continue that improvement to the public infrastructure in this area, specifically the roadway network, because I don't know if you've been out there, but the Buckeye Road is certainly a substandard roadway today. And so, I wanted to see how they could utilize this project to advance improvements to Buckeye Road. To my understanding and knowledge, there's not any plans in your CIP for that segment of roadway at this time. So, it's looking to how you can do these public-private partnerships to improve those roadways with the development. And so, what we've been working with your staff on is to come up with an agreement to continue what they're already doing from 301 to Fort Hamer, continue the southern two lanes of that roadway on, not just to this project, but continue it all the way around to Sawgrass Road, where another developer is currently working with the county to pick up the improvements from that point on over to Carter Road, which is just east of the interstate. And so, we've been working closely with your Public Works staff on drafting that agreement. We're working to have that so it'll be presented to the board with this rezoning. But I just wanted to kind of touch on it a little bit. So, they would be building certainly the first phase of that, which is the area you see in green and the area in the second, here it says phase two and three. The green and the blue concurrent with the first phase of development, so that, you know, as they're coming online, that roadway is getting complete, and then continue that on the next phase of it around the corner in a timeframe that we're working out with your staff. And so, you know, Lennar has been working closely with the staff, have been a good partner, with the county, been a good partner in building this infrastructure that's needed in the area, and they recognize the need of it. The roadway today is there on the left. It is very substandard. It's only about 20 feet wide, so the lane widths are not meeting your county standards. The picture on your right is what they're working on now to build from Fort Hamer, 301 to Fort Hamer, and they want to continue that on around the corner. We've heard a lot about safety concerns of these roadways today, and that's what they're trying to help improve in this area and build a new roadway to serve not just this site, but the overall county. They've been working with you on providing public, you know, providing utilities in this area, building those, working with the fire department, Parish Fire District, to provide a site for the fire department that they desperately need in that area. Chief Bailey is here. I appreciate him coming out today, and might hear from him shortly. But, you know, that's the thing Lennar is trying to do, is utilize this project, the impact fees that it'll create to build this needed infrastructure. So, the agreement will be structured in that, you know, Lennar takes that upfront cost. Their county isn't coming out of cash to build that roadway, and then they recoup it over time through impact fee credits. You know, as they come in for individual project permits, they utilize the impact fee credits from building that roadway. So, it's something done over time to build a roadway that the county doesn't currently have plans for or finances for, and utilizing this development to advance those improvements. So, and just to give you an idea, the bottom part is the design that they're doing. So, they're going ahead and designing it for the full four-lane, building the southern two lanes, but it will be set up for when the time comes that the county deems the four lanes appropriate. It's designed already and ready to move forward. So, with that, with what was presented to you today and your staff report, I feel this project is in compliance with the Comprehensive Plan and the Land Development Code. They're working with you to advance public infrastructure improvements, and we really hope for your recommendation of approval, or myself and our team are here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Do you know the status of the road as you're heading north, excuse me, west?
Of Buckeye?
Just west of your project, heading towards 75.
So, most of the roadway is that same condition?
Well, yes, I'm well aware of that.
Yeah.
But do you know, maybe that's a staff question, but you know about the road improvements for that?
So, what we're working on is doing the improvements from Fort Hamer around the curve to Sawgrass Road, and then at that point, what I understand is another developer in that area is currently working with the staff to bring an agreement that will continue the improvement from Sawgrass Road. They're doing some intersection improvements there, continuing all the way over to Carter Road at the interstate. I'm not aware of anything west of the interstate.
All right. Thank you.
Any additional questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Staff report, please.
Good morning, commissioners. For the record, James McDevitt, Development Services. I have been sworn. The applicant's team did a great job going through their presentation, so I'm just going to try and be very brief with mine, but staff is available if you have any questions. We are on the north side of Buckeye Road between I-75 and Fort Hamer on approximately 683 acres. We are in the UF3 future land use. The current zoning is the A General Agriculture Zoning District, and we are not within any overlays or special areas. The request is a rezon to Plan Development Residential with a large project GDP, so anything over 800 units is considered a large project, which requires an additional level of review from staff. The applicant is proposing 2,047 single-family residential dwelling units and up to 15,000 square feet for a potential fire station at a density of 2.99 dwelling units per gross acre and a floor area ratio of less than 0.01. There is access provided for the residential portion along Buckeye Road and Future Road JJ, and the public-use facility will have an access point through Buckeye. And here's just a full screen of that plan that we've already seen a few times. They are proposing single-family semi-detached, detached, and attached. So, these are the three different development standards for each of those dwelling types. As the applicant mentioned, they did hold a virtual neighborhood workshop where discussion focused mainly on improvements to Buckeye Road and the type of development in the project. And here's just an aerial showing some of the nearby developments. So, there is existing county wastewater and potable water infrastructure. However, there is no reclaimed water near the project. And because of that large project nature, there is a little bit more analysis for fire district and EMS services. So, for school capacity, we'll start there, is currently available within the school service area or a contiguous SSA. The fire district expressed in a letter submitted from them to the county, elicited from the applicant, that new facilities would help provide additional fire protection to the greater parish community. And an additional letter that was required for a large project from EMS indicated that there are currently insufficient EMS resources. However, ongoing planned capital improvement projects are slating for sufficient service to meet the development's standards or development's needs. Here's an analysis of the transportation link capacity. So, Buckeye, Sawgrass, Carter Road, Fort Hamer Road extension were all analyzed. Several of them had multiple links. The adopted level of service across the board is D, so that's what the minimum or what the maximum is that the service can reach. And current existing level of service for those are listed there with B, A, C, and B, again, lower than the adopted level of service, which is what we want to see. With the future level of service with the project, three of the four listed there are listed as D. One is F with a D with an asterisk, where Fort Hamer Road Extension widening from two to four lanes, according to the 2045 Traffic Circulation Map, Table 5.1. So, the UF3 anticipates low-density residential development as what's proposed. Again, potable water and sewer facilities are available. It does have frontage along an urban collector, Buckeye Road, and proposes multiple access points to Future JJ Road. There were no specific approvals requested, so what that means is they must meet all the applicable standards of the Land Development Code. There's no reduction in setbacks. There's no reduction in buffers. There's no additional, there's no reduction in standards. They must meet all the minimums. Buffers along Future Road JJ exceed the requirement. The roadway buffers along Buckeye exceed the requirement. The green belt buffers are proposed to exceed every requirement, and they're proposing 30-foot wetland buffers exceeding the state mandated requirement. The project is also located west of the F-Dam. With a GDP, we don't usually get to see a focal point or recreational areas identified, so at time of final site plan, they'll have to identify those. There are 1.7 acres of wetlands impacted. Their original, the site can do 2,070, not 70, 2,400, sorry, my apologies. The maximum development potential for the site is 2,049 homes, but because of the wetland impacts, that reduces the maximum development potential of the site to 2,047, so they lost two units. The estimated population of 20 gopher tortoises are on-site. There are 17.2 acres of existing native upland habitat being preserved. There is currently insufficient existing EMS resources to support proposed development, and the fire district needs to establish new facilities to provide additional fire protection for the greater parish community. For mitigating measures, the maximum development potential, as I mentioned, was reduced due to those wetland impacts, and the applicant is proposing a potential fire station of up to 15,000 square feet within their project. The application was reviewed for consistency with these comprehensive plan policies and in compliance with the Land Development Code sections listed here. In conclusion, the request can be found to be consistent with the policies of the comprehensive plan and the applicable standards of the Land Development Code. Staff will conduct a more thorough analysis for compliance with these requirements at time of preliminary final site plan. And I'm here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for staff?
So, I understand the potential for the fire department coming in there. That does not necessarily mean that we would have EMS, though, on-site. So, is there anything being planned internally with EMS being able to provide services? So, is there anything being planned internally with EMS being able to provide services in the areas, given that that's a negative impact right now, that they currently are under strain to be able to do that?
The applicant hasn't provided any correspondence with EMS. I'm not familiar with any of the capital improvements projects for those, but we can prepare that for the board if that's necessary.
Thank you.
Actually, I don't have questions for staff, but possibly Chief Bailey, if he'd like to step forward.
Well, let's finish up staff first, please.
All right. My question for staff is, I think it's all well and good that they're offering property for a fire station, but it still has to be built out, et cetera. Is there anything that's budgeted to build out? Where would the money be coming from to build for that?
I think there's a representative from parish, so why don't we have him discuss that?
If you're speaking about the fire district, where the county is not the...
Oh, that's separate.
That's a separate entity, yes.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Not this time.
Thank you, sir. Let's open this up for public comment. Please step forward.
Stacy Bailey, I'm the fire chief of the parish fire district. I have been sworn. Here's a comprehensive analysis of the need. We did a feasibility study for that area. It's, we're highly desperate need of a fire district in that area. We've been working with, collaboratively with North River Fire District, EMS, for that whole area, because, I mean, we're talking 25,000, 30,000 homes. So, in this study, and I wanted to submit this because it's very important, there's a piece to it called the RAN study. The RAN study is what it is, is it determines how many fire trucks you need, how many ambulances you need, and there's a scientific, speculative formula for that. It's based on NFPA and the National Institute of Standards and Trainings. So, it's all big players that basically dictate what we need. Manti County, we need this. We need the proper infrastructure in place. That's what you guys hear daily. This is a good plan. There's a copy of the RAN travel time study equation. Lennar's been a great partner in discussing this thing. There are other projects, Prosperity Lakes, basically, that whole area is really nicely put together, but what's key to this is the potential location on the southwest corner would put us right on Fort Hammer, so which would literally, that whole corridor, this fire station and the equipment there would be able to cover. We've had multiple fires in that area since the development. The call load in Paris since I've been there is just in the past eight years, we started a one to two calls a day. We're running 18 to 20 calls. So, this is a really big need, and as more development comes, you know, this just makes sense. So, if you have any questions...
Hello, chief. Couple of questions. Is, if this rezoning goes through, is it a guarantee that you will be offered a piece of property?
Yes.
Do we have the funding to build this station?
Well, we're an independent special fire district, so we have our own impact fees. So, every home is built. We get $500 towards the infrastructure and going. We are submitting for state appropriations, and we're also in constant conversations with the county on potential collaboration. So, I would say that, you know, we are definitely committed to this. My board has already voted. That's why I'm here today, is, you know, I'm here on permission, right? They sent me here to represent them on this behalf, and so we're supportive of the project.
Will you have EMS and ambulance on staff at the station?
We're totally in collaboration with them if they so choose, but sometimes they don't want to be in that. So, if there is a need and we can fill that request for them, we're always open for dialogue and commitment with them.
Okay. And let's just say that, yes, and they put an ambulance on staff. Will that help the insufficiency that we have?
Absolutely. Well, the whole thing is, is we are all actively working together to fill the need. That's why this RAN analysis, because it goes into how many ambulances, how many ladder trucks, how many fire trucks, all in that area is actually needed. So, we're working to try to fulfill that the best we can. But, we are dealing with multiple entities, and there's different philosophies on how to achieve that. That's why we're putting forth this study, to make sure that we all are going by the national standards and getting the best bang for the buck, if you will.
Thank you.
Mr. Chief, first, thank you and your team for your service. We greatly appreciate it. I know you're understaffed. So, Commissioner Prosser, she hit on some key points. Notwithstanding this particular property, what has been your other, are there other possibilities that you could or might choose over this property?
There's been several sites that we've tried to work through, but it just, you know, they tend to fall apart. I mean, we tried to go on Dicky Road. We tried to go in Firethorn. Then we're discussion with the school board property right at Fort Hammer. But, with Lennar stepping up to the plate, you know, we're going to, looking to support that, right? I mean, we need to get this done yesterday, not now.
So, a level of 1 to 10, 1 being the least and 10 being the most, how important is this to your fire district, et cetera?
For us, this is, you know, high marks. So, if I had to put a number, I would say at least a nine.
Okay.
We are, just the way that, this is unprecedented. You know, if you look at Venice and Northport area, right, the developers are coming in, and they're putting the fire stations and all that in because it's, they're blowing up like we are with the massive influx. You know, we should have already had this stuff in place, you know, just like you guys discussing so many of these other things. I will say, some other projects in our district, our Station 2 on Ry Road, we were able to get that fire station in before all the developments really started taking place. That was a priority. We wanted to lower the ISO, which is the insurance cost for the people of that area, because they've been here longer. Makes sense to do the people who have been here and have been paying taxes for all that time, but now, our focus is on the north region, and right now, they're in ISO Class 10, which is the worst you can get. So, by putting this fire station in, they'll immediately go to a Class 3, and it's about a $1,500 savings per home insurance. So, this is a big deal, and you start talking 25, 30 years of every home that's being built saving $1,500, that's, we're talking big bucks. So, we want to make sure that we can provide the best services we can and pay as little as possible for it.
Yes, sir. All right. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you, sir. Any additional comments from the public?
For the record, Glenn Ghibellino, I have been sworn. This could be a good project. It could. The roadway, first of all, I want to express my concern on a direct rezone, because when you do that, it never comes before you again. It goes administratively. And I'll bring one little example. We worked 10 years for an ADU at 650, 750 square feet. Carlos Bruff came in and said, "You know what? I need a 2,000-square-foot ADU." Administratively, it was done. So, all our concerns on a straight rezone will never go in front of this board again. That's a dangerous precedent to set. Administrative changes, I don't like it at all. So, again, this could be a great project. My only concern is that, again, market rate housing. If Lennar would come up to, step up to the plate and say, "You know what? We're going to put 10% of homes for workforce housing." They're already given land for a fire district, right? Why won't they just go the extra step and say, "You know what? We have a moral obligation to those folks that are going to work in that fire station to afford to live in our own community." That component's not there, and it should be. And they should step up to the plate and say, "You know what? You're right. We're going to have schoolteachers here, EMS, firefighters, that cannot afford, cannot afford to live in our market rate homes." And that's their model. If they want to do market rate, God bless them, move forward, but not to include the community in their community is a moral flaw, as far as I'm concerned. If you want to do all these homes and you want the services of the fire department, and you want the best schoolteachers, service workers, sheriff, make it affordable. They're doing 2,000 homes. Personally, I think it's, you know, we need to slow that down, but if they meet all the, check all the boxes, I guess they can go forward. But, I think they have a moral obligation to the community to provide for the community. So, if they're willing to come up to the plate and say, "You know what? You're right. We don't want that entry-level firefighter to drive 20 miles away where he can afford to live. We want him to bicycle here or walk here, right?" Is that such an impossible concept to understand? I don't think it is. I don't think it is. The other thing I want to mention is, yeah, they want to build the road. You know how many contracts I've seen do not exceed, and they come back six months later, "Oh, asphalt went up. We have to, we need another $5 million." And that's all coming off the impact fees, right? So, we don't know what that cost is, right? I don't know what the cost is per foot of road, but it's not cheap. So, where are the checks and balances on that? Because they're taking from one pot and adding it to another, and I would just want to make sure that the citizens and the other taxpayers of this community are covered in that direction. The other thing I want to say is, one person showed up. Why don't you go out there and ask the guys on Buckeye Road, "Hey, we're going to add another 2,000 homes here. Do you think traffic's good enough to handle that? A sign 500 feet? When you, when you impact the whole county, really, thousands of homes on either side of this development are going to be affected, and one person shows up? That tells me that notice was a total failure." So, I need to, I'll wrap it up here. If they're willing to come up to the plate and say, "You know what? We want our EMS and our teachers to live in this community," then they should do that. If they don't, then don't approve it, for the record. It's the moral, it's the right thing to do. It's the moral compass that they should have, all our developers should have, and unfortunately, they don't. For the record, Glenn Gadfly, Ghibellino.
Any additional speakers? At this time, let's close public comment. Any questions for staff or the applicant? I've seen any staff closing comments? Advocate closing comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, again, Kyle Grimes. I haven't been sworn, have been sworn. Just want to, just reiterate a couple of things with the agreement. This is, you know, utilizing an impact fee credit agreement. Without the project, you don't have the impact fees to pay for this improvement. We've done some preliminary numbers in the, at your current impact fee rate. The impact fees generated from this project will greatly exceed the anticipated cost of this roadway. So, you know, it's not that we're taking out of the pot of impact fees that the county already has. It's this project will provide that funding for this road and then some. So, you know, I just wanted to touch on that. And, you know, doing, you know, the moral good, that's where it comes in. We've been working with the fire district. They had a need, and Lennar had land. They are willing to give that to the fire district for something they desperately need in this area. So, Lennar has been working, not just with the county, with the fire district, building the utility lines. They have been doing the good, the stuff you want to see developers do. Partner with the county, build the infrastructure, build it with the development, so that it's not coming years down the road once they're putting the trips on the roadway network. So, I do hope you support this project. If there's any other questions, be happy to answer. Thank you.
I was just going to say that, you know, what you're doing with the fire property, I think it's commendable, and considering the current appetite of the board and trying to get ahead of infrastructure and so forth, I think it's very likely that's going to push you over the top. But Glenn is right about the affordable housing on this project, and so I just wanted to say out loud that, you know, if there's something to consider there and the possibility there, it would be, it would be nice to hear if at all possible. But, he is right about that property and having some affordable housing for those people areas. Not that it might work into the numbers for your applicant, but commendable what you're doing with the fire property.
Thank you, sir. Any deliberation or discussion?
No, I'd like to reiterate what Commissioner Bauer said. It's very commendable. We do, we do need more fire stations, more EMS. We're growing by leaps and bounds very quickly. Glenn is passionate about a lot of things, but veterans and affordable housing are his deepest passions, and I agree. It would really behoove a lot of our developers, especially the larger developers, to say, "Hey, we're for the community. We want you to stay in the community and live in the community and shop in the community." And right now, it's virtually impossible to do that. So, just as an earworm, or if you'd like to even sit down with Glenn, I'm sure he's got some brilliant ideas, but I'd love to see larger developers come before and do a little bit more affordable housing as well.
May I entertain a motion?
I'll motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
First by Mr. Bauer, second by Ms. Prosser. Please, any discussion, deliberation or anything? Please raise your hand, casting your votes. Motion passes 5-0. We're going to take a 10-minute break. Thank you.
One more to go.
I call the Planning Commission back into session. Please read item number five, please.
Number five is PDPI 25-12ZG, Lake Manatee EMS GDP with rezon. Manatee County is the owner. Your case planner today is Alicia Henry. This is a county-initiated rezon of approximately 10.16 acres. County-owned property generally located north of State Road 64 and Dam Road intersection, and commonly known as 1505, and no number assigned Dam Road. Bradenton, Manatee County, from ASTWPM, general agriculture, special treatment watershed protection, Lake Manatee overlay, and CONSTWPM, conservation, special treatment watershed protection, Lake Manatee overlay. Zoning District to PDPI, planned development, public interest zoning district retaining the overlay districts, approving a general development plan for, one, an existing government office, natural resources department slash Quatabom House of 6,342 square feet; two, an existing EMS station of 1,196 square feet; and three, 4,040 square feet of a public use facility EMS station for a total of 12,278 square feet, approving a schedule of permitted and prohibited uses as voluntarily proffered by the applicant and attached as Exhibit B.
Thank you. Is there any expat tie communication in reference to this? Seeing none. Since y'all were here last month, could we have a brief presentation and get into the meat of this?
Okay. My name is Dan Bond with BGE, and I have been sworn. I'm here today to, representing Manatee County for the Lake Manatee EMS station for the rezon application with GDP. We have our project team today here to answer questions, including Manatee County Property Management staff, Manatee County EMS staff, as well as civil engineer, environmental consultant, and traffic consultant. Just an overview of location. The project site is located just north of Highway 64, State Road 64, off of Dam Road, between Dam Road and Lake Manatee, adjacent to the Manatee County Water Treatment Facility. Our request here today is to rezon the project to PDPI, which is planned development, public interest, with a general development plan proposing a new EMS station of 4,750 square feet while maintaining the existing public use facilities on the site. As mentioned, we have provided a schedule of permitted and prohibited uses, which limit the permitted uses to public use facilities and utility use only. At this point, I would like to introduce James Crutchfield, Deputy Director of Public Safety, who would like to talk about public goals and service needs for this project.
Hello, good morning. James Crutchfield, Deputy Director of Public Safety. I have been sworn. Thank you for the opportunity to answer some of the questions from the continuance from last month. I do just want to put some things in perspective and make sure that you all are aware that EMS has been providing services out of this house for over 40 years. The county did an impact fee study in 2015, which provided us the data points we needed to submit a business case plan to increase our services in this area of the county. That business case plan was submitted for FMD review and going through the county's minutia back in 2019. Some of the questions that were brought up last month really focused around some of the operations of the EMS division and some of the standards that are used to provide essential services in the community. Right now, as we sit here today, the average response time for this ambulance in this pocket of the county is about 17 minutes. The county's average is eight minutes. So I would say that there is a dire need to provide additional resources in this area of the county. The county has already went through the procurement process to purchase an ambulance, and it's slated to arrive here next year ahead of time. Also, just for some, I guess, contextual information for you all, it takes three years to order, purchase, and build an ambulance, and then we have to hire staff and get them trained and ready to, to provide those services to the community. What's being requested today is to, to build a facility that will house two ambulances for this area of the county. One of the questions that I heard during last month was, are we partnering with the fire districts? And we, we do partner with the fire districts. The challenge is, is the need. I mean, it's a capacity issue. So when the fire stations are being built, they may have room for a single ambulance, but the workload and work demand for this current ambulance, you know, we need two now. And there's potential to need more than two in the future. With that, I would be available for questions, but we'll wait until the presentation's finished.
I think we all know that it's needed. It's just whether it's in the right spot is what I think was most of our concern was. Roadwise, being at a bad road and everything else. I think that had a lot to do with our conclusion, our pushing it down the road. Ms. Gay?
Can you clarify? So there's one ambulance presently there.
There is one ambulance currently there.
And we're looking at just increasing that to two, but potentially three or four in the future?
I mean, right now, there is slated to be two ambulances at this station.
I think, again, echoing the chairman, the concern really comes down to, this is a public safety need and public safety department. Are we taking into consideration the public safety of the residents and the people who commute on this road, given the fact that the road is quite narrow, there are no shoulders? It's becoming a thoroughfare. I mean, when I live in the area and if there is bad traffic and I'm heading east off of, coming from the north end of Rye, it tells me to pop through all the new neighborhoods and come out on this road to head east on 64. Things like that, not to mention, I believe many of the homes on the road, you know, have livestock and animals and things like that. If they're pulling a trailer and all of a sudden an ambulance needs to come out and there's no shoulder and there's, there's a lot of concerns surrounding the traffic there. I know that was another question that I specifically had was, we're seeing with the fire departments typically putting up the emergency signals on the road for them to stop traffic when they're needing to exit. We didn't have a clear answer on if that's going to be considered or is being put in. So just the general public safety of the operational. It's not that we don't want you guys to be there or to be offering the service to our community because it is a great need, but I think it's important that we take into consideration all aspects of public safety when it comes to it and not just the service being provided.
Sure. And if it's okay, I can address some of those questions now? Okay. As far as the traffic signal, usually, I mean, we have stations that are standalone stations. We have rental space where we work with the county's engineer team, where we'll ask or request to put in signals. We usually do that when there's a demonstrated need. You know, right now, you know, I do understand what you're saying with the traffic flow, but we have no problems exiting that, that driveway, if you will. You know, maybe that changes, you know, in a couple of years when there's more development and there's more traffic volume, then we would just petition and get that placed then and there. As far as operating the emergency vehicle in a narrow roadway, I mean, respectfully, I mean, we've been doing it for over 40 years.
My concern isn't you guys operating. My concern is everyone else stopping.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah. And I do hear what you're saying, and I think that the challenge here is, you know, we have some standards, right? And the county likes to maintain an average response time in the eight to nine minutes, right? So we have a department that's coming forth and has planned to meet those objectives that are set forth. And right now, we're unable to do that. The fire departments don't have enough space for us. We have nowhere to put an ambulance. We submitted a business case plan to the county to be reviewed, and this is the property that was selected.
Okay. So that was going to be my follow-up question, is if the issue is response time, what is the root cause of that issue with this location? Is it the location or the lack of ambulances at the location?
It's gonna be a combination, right? So everything is measured in public safety. You have your, your work demand. So how much work can one ambulance produce in a given hour? How much work can a single paramedic or EMT produce in a given hour? This is a capacity issue. So there's too many calls for one unit to, you know, meet that demand.
That's very clarifying and much appreciated.
Go ahead. Continue with the application, please. Presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Crutchfield. Just overview of the site. Again, it does consist of two parcels with a total of 10 acres with the existing uses on the site consisting of the existing EMS station that's there today, a little over 1,000 square feet. The existing Quatabom House, which is the county's natural resource department offices are within that office. It's a little over 6,000 square feet, and it comprises of existing parking areas on the site as well to serve those facilities. The reason, the existing zoning on the property today consists of agriculture and conservation with overlays of the watershed protection, Lake Manatee, and the special treatment. As part of this rezon request, we are keeping those overlay districts. The surrounding zoning is conservation. To the north and west is general agriculture, planned development, public interest. The east and the south is conservation and recreation open space. The future land use existing today is public semi-public, and that's really why we're going with the planned development zoning, the PDPI. The only compatible zoning for a P slash PS1 future land use is a planned development. So the PDPI- So the PDPI was most appropriate with the planned uses out at this project site. The surrounding future land uses are shown as well to the north and the east, primarily consisting of the SP1 and recreation open space to the south. General overview of the development plan. Again, a new public use facility consisting of a EMS station of 4,740 square feet while maintaining the existing uses on site as well. For compatibility, we are proposing landscape screening buffer five feet wide along the south and southeast buffer adjacent to the conservation zoning to the east, as well as a 10-foot roadway buffer along Dam Road. We are requesting a specific approval quest. Per LDC Section 531.4, public use facilities are required to have a 30-foot setback from all property lines. The existing EMS station as today, that was built in 1975, does not meet that current requirement. They didn't have that setback requirement, so we are requesting a specific approval request for that particular structure, so to meet the existing conditions that's out on the site today. The primary access for the site will be from Dam Road. There will be a singular access. The existing access that's there today, serving the existing uses, will be removed, and the new access will be shifted to the west, which will provide further separation from the curve in Dam Road, which will allow greater visibility. The future right-of-way setback of two feet is proposed along Dam Road as well, which will provide the half-width right-of-way required per the comp plan and the future thoroughfare plan, ultimately an 84-foot right-of-way for a two-lane urban collector We will also be providing the minimum 30% open space per the code, as well as providing 50-foot wetland buffers adjacent to the wetlands on the site, which are shown in dark blue along Lake Manatee. The 50-foot wetland buffer, we'll also be planting 0.24 acres of planting to restore an area of that buffer that is currently open land, to turn that into native vegetation and provide native vegetation along the river's edge. So some of the questions, these are new slides that we added since the last meeting, the conservation zoning and some of the history. So just wanted to explain this. This is consistent with the staff report and conversations with staff as well. The graphic here shows the zoning overlaid on the aerial, which shows really within the conservation area right now, there's the existing Quatabon House, the existing EMS station, as well as the show of parking areas that serve those units. Those existing structures were constructed in 1974 and 1975, prior to adoption of the LDC, and they were privately owned at that particular time by the Quatabons. The county purchased the property in 1980, and in 1981, Manatee County adopted the Land Development Code, and these parcels were zoned A, general agriculture at that time. There was a overall rezone completed by the county in early '90s, I believe it's 1991, where the parcels were, the conservation zoning was added to these parcels when, at the time, it was owned by Manatee County and these uses were existing on the property at that time. So again, the existing structures are currently located within the conservation zoning through conversations with staff, the history, and I'll go into some more slides after this just to show kind of a timeframe. But potentially a mapping error, which does occur occasionally on the zoning maps. The zoning maps back in the day were, you know, very crude, I would say, compared to what they are today. But those uses were in use on the property for 17 years, being utilized by the county and a private owner prior to the conservation zoning being added to the site. So we don't really have, can't explain a reason why that was added in that particular location, as the property has been historically used by the county as public use. So I'll just go through these quickly, but this is just kind of a, you know, historical overview of timeframes. This, I added the zoning line just as a reference point, not that it was owned at that point at the time, but that is, that line does represent the conservation zoning to the south of it. So this is 1978, when it was a privately owned property, which you can see the Quatabon House and the structure used by EMS today. This is 1984, similar uses. 1994, very similar, looks almost identical for the last, you know, almost 20 years. And then this is today's aerial with the zoning line that, again, shows the same uses, same buildings, same structures with additional zoning. So that's why we believe there maybe was just some type of mapping error to include that area within that conservation zoning. Again, there were some questions brought up about Dam Road during the last hearing, so we did want to address some of those. The existing EMS station, as Mr. Crutchfield mentioned, clearly operates at the project site, utilizes Dam Road and Waterline Road for access today. Proposed driveway access will be relocated to the west compared to the existing driveway access, which will improve site visibility along Dam Road for the vehicles exiting and entering. And the driveway site distance is something that does get reviewed as well during the final site plan review with Manatee County Transportation Department. Also, for the section of Dam Road, along the project frontage, there are two 12-foot travel lanes. We did have that surveyed, so this is based on survey data, and which provides a 24-foot wide pavement width. There's an existing right-of-way width of 80 feet. We are, again, proposing additional two feet to meet the half-width right-of-way requirements. And again, EMS has been utilizing this roadway for access for 40 years. As far as, we heard some concerns about flooding. We talked, had some conversations with county staff that was at the neighborhood meeting about where that flooding was occurring. It was described to me that it was further to the west along Waterline Road, closer to the Rye Road areas, which approximately a mile to two miles away from this project site. Regardless of the distance, this site will not contribute at all to adding any drainage to Dam Road or Waterline Road. The site has a significant drop in elevation, approximately 22 feet, from Dam Road to Lake Manatee that all sheet flows today towards Lake Manatee. We will be proposing a stormwater pond to collect stormwater from the proposed improvements and in accordance with the code, providing the 150% treatment due to the watershed overlay and special treatment districts. So in conclusion, we would request the recommendation of approval to the Board of County Commissioners to rezone the project from general agriculture and conservation to plan development, public interest. The applicant, for the record, agrees with all stipulations proposed in Section 8 of the staff report. The project, we feel is compatible and consistent with the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code, and approval of this project will facilitate the expansion of essential public services to better serve this growing portion of the county. And I'll be happy to answer any questions along with our team that is here.
Could you clarify on the, and it may help to bring up the map showing the conservation Can you just clarify that in this, we would strictly be removing the conservation easement within the project site and not everything in the conservation easement?
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, there's no conservation easement. It's just a conservation zone district.
Okay.
That is correct. We're only asking, within those project limits, the orange limits, to remove the zoning within that area.
Perfect. Thank you for the clarification.
Any additional questions? Thank you, sir. Could we have a staff report or staff presentation?
Alicia Henry again here for staff. I've been sworn. So Mr. Bond has done a very thorough job in explaining all parts of this project, so I will just go ahead and highlight the parts that I think are important to share again with planning commission. I would also like to state that, I'd like to preface this presentation with the statement that there has been no change to the staff report on the basis that, basis staff has reviewed and analyzed this project and still supports the intent to ensure that this project meets the requirements that meet the provisions of the Land Development Code and the comprehensive plan. All right. So the request, again, the request is to rezone 10.16 acres from general agriculture and conservation to PDPI, which is Plan Development Public Interest, with a general development plan. Site is also located in the special treatment and Lake Manatee watershed protection overlay and have a schedule of permitted and prohibited uses proffered by the applicant. If approved, it will permit a two-story, 4,740-square-foot additional building for an EMS station and will retain an existing government office of 6,342 square feet and an EMS station of 1,196 square feet. Okay. The only thing that I would like to point out on this general development plan is the site, it will exceed the required 30% of open space. And as an indicator there, that dot, you may not be able to read the font that there, but it does say the public use facility, where the public use facility for the EMS station is proposed. So as you can see, it's a great distance away from the wetland. They do have to give us an approximation as to where they will be having the development done. So this is a good diagram to, or development plan demonstrating as to where the building will be on site. And again, with the existing building, it is located within the 30-foot setback, and we're just asking for this building where it's being utilized today as the EMS station to have in the reduced eight foot, requesting for a reduced setback of eight feet for this building that was built in 1975. Okay. So I'm going to highlight the two overlays that are on this for, that is within this area for where the project is being proposed. So the special treatment overlay, this site is not proposing any of the uses that are outlined in the special treatment of our land development code. So the applicable provisions of that overlay is not being violated in any way with the use that is being proposed. So the other overlay that is existing out there is Lake Manatee Reservoir Watershed Protection Overlay District. And the intent for this particular overlay is to protect the quality and quantity of potential and existing potable water supplies within the public surface water reservoirs, provide performance standards and best management practices designed to achieve such water quality and quantity protection, provide additional protection for specific areas of or ecological resources in the county that are especially sensitive by limiting or monitoring uses such as industrial mining activities, major earth moving, hazardous waste, landfills, aviation facilities, and feedlots. So in regards to the stormwater, site is within the Lake Manatee watershed. Site is required to provide 150% treatment requirements. No flow reductions are required. No improvements are proposed in the FEMA flood hazard area. So here we have the transportation link capacity analysis. So on the below chart, it shows the adopted level of service and the future level of service for the nearest thoroughfare. And the adopted level of service currently is C. Without the project, it is C, and with the project implemented, it will remain as C. So for the positive aspects, the public use facility, which will be an EMS station, addition will continue to provide emergency services to the general public. Applicant have declared a public use facility, the EMS station, as it is required by PSP future land use category. There are no wetland impacts proposed with this project. No state or federal listed species were observed on site. The site design will provide 0.5 acres of upland preservation area. The site design will provide 1.10 acres of native plant communities. The project will minimize emergency response times. We have retained that there are no key negative aspects found. And for mitigation mitigating measures, schedule of permitted and prohibited uses have been proffered, which takes into account the sensitive surrounding areas, such as the Lake Manatee Reservoir Watershed Protection Overlay and the adjacent Lake Manatee State Park. During time of PSP/FSP, plans will further be reviewed for potential impacts to the surrounding area. Appropriate buffering, landscaping, and design shall be utilized as a mechanism to maintain the water quality in the watershed protection Lake Manatee overlay. Staff finds the request can be found to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and in compliance with the applicable provisions of the Land Development Code. Any questions?
Any questions for staff? No, may have not at this time. Let's open it up for public comment. Please step forward. State your name and county residence, and as you've been sworn.
Good morning. My name's Rob Brown, Manatee County, and I have been sworn. First, I'd like to state firmly I'm in support of Manatee County EMS. I have personal friends that were paramedics and with administration, and any comments I make not reflect on EMS's operations, personnel, or professionalism, and what that on the record. Okay? In fact, my last few years working for Manatee County Natural Resources, my office was located in the Quatabon House, with the Q House, and I was very familiar with the EMS staff that was stationed there. I want to go back and give you some history. First, the subject property was purchased by Manatee County Utilities Department in 1984, and I have the agenda memorandum there and the staff report. And the staff recommendation supported the acquisition states, "For protection of the lake and recharge recovery purposes, county ownership is desirable." This purchase is consistent with watershed acquisitions, everybody knows duet, preserved by Manatee County Utilities to protect water quality and quantity of Lake Manatee. 1989, I have it here.
Sir, could we have the overhead turned on?
Overhead, sorry. I'm just providing these for the record. You'll have these. 1989, Manatee County entered a lease agreement with Manatee County EMS to use the Quatabon Estate guest house. That's what that old building was. The resolution outlines a monthly rent duration, which is basically stated until terminated. The lesssee responsibilities, which include unlimited access by Utilities Department for the purpose of examination and inspection of facilities, and currently I haven't been able to find any documentation whether that lease- able to find any documentation whether that lease has been terminated or not. I reviewed the staff report for this project, find that it is complete and thorough, but I do find there's some conflicts and omissions. The most significant issues relate to the protections of Lake Manatee and the elimination of the conservation zoning. The property was purchased by Manatee County Utilities for the purpose of protecting water quality and quantity of Lake Manatee. Additional development on this parcel contradicts this purpose. The staff reports outlined that Lake Manatee Watershed Protection Overlay District restrictions, but fails to point out that according to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection Water Body Designations, Lake Manatee is currently impaired and is also an outstanding Florida water. And there's a report from Owen County Water Atlas showing it's impaired and an OFW. Both designations should require development in the watershed to improve water quality to the lake. This project does not accomplish this. Additionally, rezoning the entire property to PDPI from existing conservation has the potential to allow for development that could further impact the lake water quality and quantity. Okay. Just a few additional points. Wastewater, no one spoke about that. Staff reports references an existing two-inch force main at the site of the, that services Manatee County Parks. I don't know if a two-inch force main, but I'm assuming it's like 24 at the minimum. But they never state that the new complex will be serviced by county-owned wastewater system. In fact, I know that the existing buildings on site currently have septic systems for wastewater treatment. Will the new facility be using a septic system? That's not good to be right there on the lake. Landscaping, it was stated in the staff report that a five-foot screening buffer to the south and southeast, the site will also have a 10-foot roadway buffer. How will this be irrigated? Since reclaimed water or reused water is prohibited in the overlay, and Section 8, Paragraph 6 states, the use of Manatee County public water supply should be prohibited. So, an installation and use of groundwater irrigation well in the old lay district this close to the lake is inconsistent with protecting water quantity to the lake. Stormwater management, going hours for that, but current stormwater standards and SWIFT criteria are inadequate to protect or improve water quality to the lake. So, finally, as development encroaches Lake Manatee watershed, the county should set an example to others to minimize rezoning, especially eliminating existing conservation to more intense uses, and provide projects that maintain to improves water quality and quantity conditions in the lake, and adheres to the purpose of the original acquisition of the property. And for our recommended denial of this request, but I really hope you can find, county and EMS can find a more suitable site for this expansion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I have some written approvals for, to speak for people. I've got eight of them. That will give me 10 minutes to speak, as we do with BOCC meetings. Yes, good morning. Mark Van Der Ee, Manatee County, I have been sworn. This morning, I'm speaking on behalf of the Waterline Road Preservation Group. I spoke previously on this particular rezone request, and we ask you to please deny this rezone request or ask the applicant to withdraw the request, the application. The staff report says that there are no negative aspects to this project. Alls we see are negative aspects. We don't see any positive aspects, really. And I'll try to delineate those as I go through my discussion here. It's not a good location for this EMS. Now, I know it has been stated that they've been using it that way for the last 40 years. Well, I don't know if you've noticed lately, but Manatee County, East County, is not like it was 40 years ago. That road, Waterline Road, is getting congested. As you know yourselves, there's a lot of through traffic through Rye Wilderness Subdivision dumping out onto Waterline Road and Dam Road. Now, granted, the road, right in front of where the Quaterbomb property is right now, is not necessarily substandard as far as its width or its pavement structure quality. It still has drainage ditches on either side, there's no place to pull off. Down Dam Road towards State Road 64, you can't pull off the land to either side of the road, there's no good shoulders there. They're boggy in the rainy season, they're wet. If you pull off the road there, you're stuck. You've got to get a tow truck or tractor to get pulled out. Now, going down Waterline Road, which is where most of the EMS drivers go, that road is substandard, definitely, does not have the width. It is subs, I don't think it's 20 feet wide in many places. We surveyed it. We have the survey data. We sent that to the county, tried to get them to ease off on calling this a, an urban collector. It's not. It's not. You can't do that. The problems, let me show this overshot slide here, if you would. Here's a prime example, here's a prime example. Have a couple bicyclists here, you have a car down the middle of the road. This is typical on Waterline Road. You get these deep ditches here, they're usually full of water. Rainy season, they stay pretty much full of water. You have a, here's a car coming from the other direction, and this is taken a while back. Nowadays, you'll see three or four times as much congestion in this particular area. If you have an ambulance coming down there, there's no place for these cars to pull off. You just can't do it. Coupled with the fact that this is still an agricultural neighborhood, you've got horse trailers, you've got tractors, you've got all kinds of stuff coming on this road, there's no place for the EMS to go. Now, we never, we've never stated that this particular project would cause flooding or add to the flooding issues on the roadway. What we were saying is that the roadway, the west end of Waterline Road and the middle sections now, recently, by where Sand Branch Creek crosses floods. Okay, there's three major crossing, creek crossings under Waterline Road. You've got Sand Branch, and you've got two branches of Mill Creek. And this came from your, your Stormwater County Stormwater Engineer. This is the, this is Waterline Road, and this is not a hurricane day, this is not a, this is in June, just after a heavy thunderstorm. And this, this is Waterline Road here. This is where you want your ambulances to go down. Waterline Road is like this regularly during the rainy season. This is not unusual. It's a problem. Now, the county did put up signs now, warning that the road may be flooded, because the road is flooded most of the time during rainy season. Not every day, not 24 hours, but when it floods like this, it takes sometimes 24 hours for it to clear out. If you look at the Mill Creek Water Management District from your county, this is Waterline Road here. It's flood zone. It's prone to flooding. That's got to be fixed. Now, here again, here's Waterline Road. This is the, the water treatment plant. Okay, here's Dam Road where it transitions to Waterline Road. Okay, your EMS has, EMS has, have to get down this road, they have to pass this semi-industrial area of the water plant. There's big trucks, there's semi-trucks in here all the time. You have a gasoline station here. On any given time, you may have three or four semis lined up along Dam Road. So, now, you only got a one-lane road, and it's a substandard one-lane road here. It's not conducive for EMS activity. If you want to improve your, your response times, you need to move this EMS out of this area and not use Waterline Road and Dam Road. You can add ambulances to it, you could do that now. I think there's only one running there now. You've got capacity for two, but even if you put three or four or five, it's not going to help your response time, in our opinion, because the road is substandard. You can't handle it. You can't handle it. Now, here, here's the EMS here, the Quaterbomb property. Here's Dam Road. This is that blind curve. And, yeah, they moved the driveway maybe 50, 60 feet to the west to help. This is a deadly, this is a deadly curve. The speed limit here is 45 miles an hour, which means that everybody's going 60 miles an hour on that curve daily. It's very dangerous. I think down the road, the county's planning to drop the speed limit some, but there's no improvements scheduled for Waterline Road or Dam Road. There's no improvements. There's no curbs, there's no sidewalks, there's no widening, there's no repaving, there's nothing. They're not going to do anything with the ditches. No improvements at all. What we're suggesting is, suggesting is, instead of putting the EMS station here, leaving it here, and forcing the ambulance drivers to drive down a substandard road, put it here, right here, at the intersection of State Road 64 and Bournside, at the end of Dam Road, there's a fire station number nine going in right now. In fact, the engineer of record is the same engineer that's working on this project for this rezone. You've got Firehouse Nine, go ahead and put the EMS, co-locate the EMS right there. I think they have space for it. If not, they should be able to expand, and that would be a great location. And they could just zip down State Road 64, which is slated for improvements. It does have shoulders, it does have pull-offs, it has a good speed limit. It's closer to the area where all of the housing's going. Here it is again. This is State Road 64 and Bournside. Fire Station Nine's going in right there. They've got design plans for it now, it's not too early to make some good modifications to it. These are all the new houses going in down here. You know, all the heart attacks are going to be these people right here that are moving into these houses from up north next to the racetrack. Once they move in and they see that they're going to have races all the weekends on the fall, EMS is going to have to service them. Here's another look at that new intersection between Bournside and State Road 64. Firehouse Nine is going in right there. Co-locate it. You'll save money. You save money if you co-locate these EMSs with fire station. We are definitely against changing any conservation land for plan development. It's not a good idea. We believe this property, the Quaterbomb property, was transferred to the county. The deed, I'm not sure if the deed states or if the process where the county approved acquiring this property for like $10. We believe that that was meant for supply water services. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
For the record, Glenn Gibbeline, I've been sworn. How did we ever get to this point? It's just, it's amazing that we've spent all this staff time, all this money, all this effort, without really hearing from the public. You've got two experts up here. You should have had this conversation first, instead of spending all this staff time trying to, trying to do this. I agree, not one square inch of conservation land should be subject to any development. In addition to, the septic field, that's a non-starter. Gentlemen told you before, there's a septic out there. Now, you want to put more people out there and more trucks out there? You have to increase the septic field. I don't think, I don't think, I don't think this was very well thought out at all. The turnout was, was poor at best, and most people I've talked to are adamantly against this for the reasons we've heard for the last 15 minutes. It just, this, these silos of different money, EMS, fire, sheriff, and all these separate egos, this got to stop. You get, you get one location, Bournside, you, you can, you can either put the EMS with the fire department, and if the sheriff wants to come in, there's where you go. You can't go off the reservation and say, here's where we want to put it, and that's what we're going to get. No. That's a waste of taxpayers' money. It's a waste of my money, and it's not, it's not a collaborative effort. You either go back to the mediation table and say, here's where it's going to go, all three of you, or it's not going to go anywhere. That's what the public is demanding. The best use of our tax dollars is collaboration with the three entities. But you've got these three pots of money, they all want to go off the reservation and do their own thing. It's ridiculous. The, they're only, they're only giving up 1,100 square feet, right? They can go build a new one, 4,500 with, with, with the, with the fire department. As far the, as far as the fire truck, you know, two years to order it, well, we just sold a fire truck valued at $70,000 for $12,000 to De Soto, that in my investigation, had at least two years' life left in it. It was a Freightliner with only 236,000 miles on it. Could have got easily got two years out of that, so maybe we should have thought of that before we surplus'd it out. It's ridiculous. This, this is a bad location. So many, so many, so many reasons to deny this, and how it ever got this far with the staff and EMS trying to shove this down our throats is unacceptable. That's not the best use of my money. There has to be, you know, when you go to court, the judge says, hey, go out in the hallway and talk about some mediation, and then come back. You should be mediate this. You should, you should set the guidelines, there should be a policy, if we can collaborate and add it in the same place, we should be doing that. And I haven't seen that in decades, and that policy's got to change. And the mindset of the fire department and EMS, and perhaps the sheriff, has to change. It must change. Who would not want three, three departments in one area, right? Collaboration, taxpayer money, and, and have everything centrally located for the same response time. That's the direction we need to go. You heard, you heard from far smarter people than I am, and as a taxpayer, I just, I just see this as a, a waste of money. You know, I pulled a permit, they're spending $14,000 on upgrade on electrical, still hasn't been closed out, so I assume that's for the office. But they're only giving up 1,100 square feet, and you're right. It may have worked 40 years ago, but it ain't working today. The flooding, the, the, the septic is a no-starter, I'll tell you that right now. Conservation land, absolutely not. And it's two separate lots, I went on a tax appraiser. It's two separate IP numbers, two separate IP numbers, and they haven't even joined that as a 110 acre, because they're talking about, oh, it's 110 acre site. No, it's not. It's two pieces of property. And this should say, are you for it or against it? Bad turnout, bad collaboration, we can do better, we must do better moving forward. I urge this board to deny this application and go collaborate with the fire department.
Almost lunchtime. Larry Liu, Manatee County resident, and I have been sworn. I've been following this topic and discussions from previous presentations, and I do want to compliment the staff that did the presentation today. It was remarkably better than the last presentation that I have watched. Been a resident for 40 years, residing near this station for 27. Some of you all know that I worked for Manatee County EMS for 37 years and retired from the agency and worked closely with Rob Brown as well. This location and station has been housing one ALS unit for 40 years, as we heard. EMS EMS has been serving the county for fifty-three of those years. Prior to this location, the station was in a trailer at the corner of 675 and 064 in a county radio tower site. When the unit was relocated to this current station, there was a marked improvement in the eighties. Serving the community in East and North County, as we only had six ambulances back then, the staff and the additional resources is necessary. This new station, an improved station, has been planned for years to enhance service to our community. As I understand, there are plans, as we heard earlier, to add an additional ambulance and possibly it can handle the four. This improvement will include increased hurricane standards that the current location does not provide for our staff. To certain categories of hurricanes, the unit has to relocate to a hardened location off of the area that it's currently serving and not directly serving in the area. I heard and I realize the concerns of the blind curve and the two-lane road. EMS staff has been handling responses without injuries or incidences for decades and without difficulty. It was suggested today, as well as it was at the last planning meeting, and we heard about the flashing light, that that probably is a good added asset to that location on this road, just to alert motorists that an ambulance could be departing on an emergency call. It was also mentioned the road floods, as we've seen some photos earlier. Our staff is well aware of how to navigate the roads in Manatee County. It floods on the island, any rainstorm, and we give alerts out to the crews and let them know, don't go this way, go that way. They are, they are well-trained in how to handle and navigate, no pun intended, with water in Manatee County. There were comments and concerns about moving the station into the area of conservatation, as we heard from Mr. Brown. And maybe possibly that could be relocated and addressed. I think it will be. We have good engineers and good staff on hand. Finally, this expansion of Manatee County EMS growth is needed. It will create additional resources for the area being served. I look for the commissioner to recognize this expansion and will serve the community for future years and move forward to approve their request. Thank you.
From your expertise and your experience, we always heard from, I think, Mr. Vanderen about putting an EMS place at the corner of 64, and it's, there's a fire station going in there at some point. Are you aware of that at all?
Yes. Being East Manatee resident, I do attend East Manatee Fire District meetings, so yes, I'm aware of that.
Okay. Would you agree or disagree that even if another EMS was able to go in that fire station, do you still need this as well?
Yes. And, and I can say, as we heard from Assistant Deputy Director Crutchfield, sometimes co-locating within the fire stations, one, it's not our building, it's not a county asset, so we do have some difficulties navigating some other things in our building because we're kind of like a renter. And our business practices from EMS standpoint, medical versus the fire, is a little different. We work harmoniously, as Glenn said earlier, collaboration. We do on-scene of calls and things, but somehow, in some way, it's difficult being housed at the same place because EMS is a busy asset in this county.
Okay. Thank you, Larry.
I'm Randy Morton, Manatee County resident. I have been sworn. About three years ago, I started a social media platform called Support Manatee EMS. And I did it because I saw what these folks, these medics are going through. We're losing a ton of them, okay? And I'm going to get on topic in a minute, but we're losing a ton of them. I checked a two-year period, one year or two years, we lost seventy-two, right? And the reason I bring this up is because I've visited this, this facility, Station Five, and I was shocked. I don't know if any of y'all have visited it, but if you were offered to buy that home tomorrow, you wouldn't do it, and you wouldn't live in it, and you wouldn't want to pull a twenty-four-hour shift in that house. That is not suitable for EMS medics. And that affects morale, too. If you put somebody in that house and you make them work there for years, it's just not right. I'm going to support a new facility there. I, I think they deserve it. I think their medics, we need to keep them here. You know, being a paramedic right now in the United States is like a piece of gold. A lot of kids don't want to do it anymore, okay? They just don't want to be paramedics. It's a lot of work. It's, it's a lot of stress. I was a cop for thirty-two years, okay, in a large city. I personally believe, by what I see them do in Manatee County, I think it's more stressful than what I did, okay? I really do. And I think that's why they're leaving because hospitals are paying them more to come to the hospital and work and whatever. I did research as a cop, right, in a large city. I, I looked at plans on traffic plans to see, you know, why accidents were occurring at certain locations. And I tried to make, to county and city staff, I tried to make improvements with my expertise. I've seen no accidents on that road involving EMS that I can find. I mean, Mr. Crutchfield may be respond to it, but my conversations with staff, I didn't see any accidents occur. If you look at where I live in Parrish, I've got roads that are way smaller that EMS has to go through all the time, all the time they have to go through that. I'm not a big fan, this separation. I do agree about what was said about this separation between fire and EMS, but I don't really see in that getting any better because the fire districts, they get their money, and they don't want to split up. I mean, it's very apparent, what I've seen through the history of this county. So I don't see a merger occurring anytime soon. I think that we need to have independent EMS stations. Yes, it costs a bit more money, but we pay each of these fire districts money to be in these stations, which we're losing money on that. I like the idea of independent stations. I know we're doing it in Parrish. It's, you know, I like if developers are going to develop on any of that roadway, I like what Lennar is doing and, and, you know, paying for portions of these roads to improve them. But I have not, in my investigation, seen any accidents, traffic issues occurring on the road, and I think that needs to be, you know, considered. My big deal about doing this presentation is, let's retain our medics, let's build them a nice station. And, and, and I'm not a proponent of moving them into firehouses. It always doesn't work out through my interviews with medics. There is, for some reason, this little tension that occurs between fire and EMS. I don't know why, but it does. And, and if a hurricane occurs, we need a facility that has a generator and is ready to house these people so they don't have to move out of these facilities. We have facilities where medics have to move out when a hurricane comes. We need a strong facility. The next problem is, if they move in with fire and a hurricane occurs, the fire department pulls in all their shifts. And guess what? There's no room for EMS because they pulled in A, A-shifts, B-shifts, C-shifts into that firehouse to respond to the emergency, and now EMS doesn't have a place to stay. So that's my two cents. First, I'd like to say I appreciate all y'all. Thank you for your service. Nobody said it today, but thank y'all for your service and for what y'all do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else for the public? At this time, let's close public comment. Questions for the applicant? Could you respond to the public comments?
Good after, is this on? Okay. Good afternoon now. Dan Bond with BG for the record. I will ask Mr. Crutchfield again. I think it's been touched on as far as the access issue. I think it's been explained to us, again, that they are no stranger to things that happen on the roadway, particularly in these areas that it's transitioning suburban to rural. So they're, they're used, used to these. One of the benefits of this site is that it has two ways to go. So you've got waterline road, but you also have got Dam Road that goes to State Road 64. So as we always say, two means of access. So I will let him talk briefly about that, and I'll address some other items.
James Crutchfield, Deputy Director of Public Safety, I have been sworn. Just to answer that question, there, there hasn't been an issue that I'm aware of. Assistant Chief Larry Liu, retired, has been here for a number of years and attested to the same. I, I am not aware of any issue. It did occur to me while the presentation was occurring that the, the board recently adopted some traffic preemption devices that I think that would be applicable and would address some of the concerns that you guys have as far as like flashing traffic patterns. How that device works, it turns on when the emergency lights turn on and it allows traffic to flush through. So from an operations perspective, I would say that that's much more appropriate and much more safer for operating motor vehicles because it's not a single light, it's a series of lights.
Thank you. And just to answer a couple more of the questions that I heard, as far as drainage and treatment, again, we are providing, exceeding the standard required treatment for the county. We are providing one-hundred-and-fifty percent of the minimum required treatment. We also are required to meet all SWITH mud and Manatee County regulations related to stormwater. As far as utilities goes, same thing as well. That will be reviewed at the time of the final site plan as far as the details of utilities. Those will be consistent with the permitted uses within Lake Manatee and the watershed district and the special treatment district. So we, again, with this facility, we're not going to propose anything that isn't something that's prohibited within the watershed. And I believe Alicia and her staff report went over some of those items that were restricted uses within the particular watershed, and we would not be.
What about the septic tank? You'd be putting a force main in or tying into the existing two-inch?
At this time, we believe we're using the septic system for, for that. That is what's out there. That's the closest resource. But again, that's not a prohibited use within the watershed district. We're not directly adjacent to Lake Manatee. The project is, the site is just behind the Quaterbomb House, so that's somewhat in the middle of the property. But again, it's not a prohibited use within that area.
That was basically my, my question, where, where the septic field was located. And you'll be increasing that? Are you bringing it forward more to the side?
It, it would be a new system directly adjacent to the.
How much larger will that system be?
I don't know off, offhand. Again, that's kind of the next level of detail, but.
It would be wonderful to get everybody off of septic. You've got Terraceya Island right there in a watershed that's aquifer that's all septic. But, okay. All right. Thank you.
Any additional questions for the applicant? We're good right now. Questions for staff?
Ms. Garrett, can I talk to you for a second?
Yes.
What concerns, if any? If anyone here has concerns from environmental standpoint, septic scenario, being so close to Lake Manatee, et cetera, it would be you. So any concerns whatsoever, mitigating factors, et cetera?
So I also want to state that we have, Cara Canick for staff, I have been sworn. We do have Alyssa Powers here, and her team is the Environmental Protection Division that works out at the Q House. They review well, wells, water quality, air quality. So I don't want to speak on her behalf if she has anything to say as well. From the conservation area zoning perspective, if you do look at the proposal, most of the property is zoned agriculture, other than where the Q House is currently located in that front portion that fronts the road. That's really the area right now that's zoned for conservation. And a few years ago, there was a comprehensive plan amendment, a map amendment, to change the future land use category to be PSP one, I believe. I don't know if Rachel can confirm that, to, to support county facility uses. So this zoning pairs with that future land use. So if you do look at the current zoning, it's mostly agriculture with just a sliver of the front portion that's conservation. From looking at the preliminary plans moving forward, the next step, they are proposing a septic field, and the county supersedes state requirements for, for setbacks. So there's a four-hundred-foot setback from septic tanks to outstanding Florida waters, and there's a two-hundred-foot setback from jurisdictional wetlands and watershed protection overlays. And so they'll have to meet those two requirements as well. And then they are providing a fifty-foot wetland buffer adjacent to the wetland area on site.
Okay. And then I would like to hear from the environmental aspect, just to see if there's any concerns that have not been on the record or lack thereof.
Hello, Ms., this is Alyssa Powers with Manatee County Natural Resources Department, and I have been sworn. In addition to what Cara just said, the House Bill 1379 requirements that were recently passed require enhanced nutrient-reducing systems, septic systems, to go in within BMAP areas. And the Manatee River BMAP area was expanded just this summer in 2025. So the proposed project will have to meet those requirements as well for any septic systems that go in besides the additional setbacks that Cara just described to you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any additional questions for staff? Staff closing comments? Nothing? Affluent closing comments? Nothing? Okay. Thank you. Discussion?
Thank you, guys, for your report. It was much more thorough and clarifying than previously. I just still come back to, you know, and again, it's not a question of whether or not I support EMS. I, I do. My brother is actually retiring from another county in a week after twenty years of service. And this is just a broader question of, we're at a really critical point in our county, and we are hemming and hawing and kicking and screaming at meetings from, you know, individuals on Facebook, all the way up to BCC meetings and everything in between about holding developers to a higher standard. And I think it's really important that we, as a county, then, on our own projects, lead by example on that. And so it's doing those additional extra steps that come up when we talk about questions, you know? Sure, maybe there hasn't been a traffic accident, but that doesn't mean that there weren't close calls. It doesn't mean that we don't need and we shouldn't look at, you know, why can't we now preliminarily, understanding we're going to have growth, we're projecting that we could have four ambulances at this site, why wouldn't we go ahead and put in these traffic signals? Just different things like that. And so I will support this project after today's presentation, but I want to be on record and strongly encourage and urge you all as you move through the remainder of this process to keep that in mind and hold ourselves to that higher standard and lead by example.
Mr. Chair, I just want to make a motion to approve.
We have a first by Mr. Bauer, looking for a second. Second by Ms. Gay. Any further discussion? My thought is, I really think y'all could find a better spot for it. That's kind of, you're trying to put a round peg in a square hole. There's other places that it would deem better environmentally. When you wash a car, change oil, maybe, I don't know. Cars leak, you're right by the water. You know what I mean? So I'm not going to vote for it, but.
My take for my, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Okay. For my motion is, is pretty simple. At the end of the day, we need the service. I don't think the location is perfect by any stretch of the imagination. I get the argument mark about, you know, waterline road, but the project also sits less than thirty seconds away from State Road 64. We need, from a fiscal standpoint, if we don't have this, then we got to go buy other property. And I don't know where that's going to be and how much that's going to cost, but it's going to be a pretty penny. So again, I don't prefer this location, but we need the services. EMS needs our support. We've been lacking supporting EMS for years. So that's, that's really the basis for my decision today.
Show of hands for the vote.
Call in favor.
So motion passes 3-2. I believe that's our final item of the agenda and I call this meeting adjourned. Thank y'all.